On Tuesday, October 13th at 7:30 PM in the Board Meeting Room. I kick off my report tonight with lots of information. It has been a busy week. Board members have been working nonstop, as has the administration. I do think it's time for some factual information, especially from what has been running on around on social media. I would also remind people that the best place to get Board of Education meeting is in Board of Education Meetings on our website or reaching out to Board of Education members or the District for District information. There have been a lot of questions and we have heard from the teachers' union that their voice has not been heard. What I would like to point out is on the reopening task force, both the DEA president and vice president were part of that, along with many teachers. There were many ideas talked about, so the idea of being heard and all ideas being implemented are two things we need to sort out. Further, the DEA was told that they had the right to impact bargain in the end of July, beginning of August. They decided to send notification of impact bargaining September 12th after school had started. The Board of Education has engaged in those negotiations in good faith and continues to engage in those negotiations, seeking to remedy these problems. I just think that the information there needs to be factual. Further, we have heard a lot about representation at the board table. What I would like to say is the board are leaders. We are leaders. We are not poll interpreters. We are not, we don't go by peer pressure. We listen to our public. We listen to our experts. We discuss as a group and then we make decisions where appropriate. I think all nine members have worked hard to do that. I think we have met continually over the summer to do that. I would remind all people, we really are in unprecedented times. So again, I think questions, ideas, representation, and to all those who have engaged in public comment to let us know their thoughts, they are appreciated. The best place and the best way to do that is at the board meetings or around the board via email. Every email I get goes to board members. Similarly, if you email another board member, they have a duty to email the board. I just think those are the best ways to do this. When we take this on social media, when we ask questions in groups that might not have the answer, we start to spread misinformation. So I would implore the public to please continue to reach out to the Board of Education for clear and thoughtful answers. I would employ the teachers to consider, to continue to reach out for information and questions and continuing in this bargaining process in good faith. I continue to believe that if any district can open our schools inside of a pandemic, we will do that. It will not be without its bumps and bruises and changes. So tonight, what you will witness is the Board of Education doing its business as a group of nine elected representatives. There are lots of viewpoints. The teachers who are out front of our building at a rally tonight, I can respect that decision, they have a viewpoint. There are parents who believe that schools should open full-time immediately. They have a viewpoint. There are parents who believe schools should be, stay in the hybrid mode. They have a viewpoint. All of these viewpoints are heard and tonight, we will be your leaders. We will discuss these issues and we will look to both our educational leaders for their guidance and our public health leaders for their guidance. With that, I will open it up to public comment.
Good evening. If you would like to speak during public comment, click the participants icon on the bottom of your Zoom screen. Next, click the raise hand option. You will notice a blue hand icon appear in the upper corner of your screen where your face, name, and/or number appears. When it is your turn to speak, the facilitator will identify you and announce that you are unmuted for public comments. Once recognized and unmuted, please state your name and address. You will have up to three minutes to comment. Ms. Catherine McGettigan, you are unmuted and recognized.
Thank you. I'm Catherine McGettigan. I reside at 20 Beth Marley Road in Norwalk. I've been a member of the Darien School Community for 26 years and I currently teach first grade at Ox Ridge. I'd like to start by saying thank you to the parents for helping with the remote learning at home last spring and now. As hard as staff has worked, we all know how difficult it has been at home. I'm going to try to touch on three things in my three minutes. First, the hybrid start. As challenging as it's been for school and home, it's turned out to be a good compromise. It has allowed students the chance to learn what it's like in school with limitations they've never known before. It's also given staff the chance to tackle situations that we would never have been able to do had all the students been in person from the start. We do look forward to seeing everyone again in person and also staying healthy. A big concern once we are all together again is that students need more feet to safely eat, especially at the elementary level, as it is currently only a three-foot distance in most places. Next, I'd like to touch upon last spring's learning. While I can focus better on the elementary level, I do know that DPS does not have Slack or staff members. We all worked extremely hard to deliver instruction in creative ways last spring. By mid-spring, our first grades had opportunities nearly every day for meetings or small group work with teachers and sometimes paraprofessionals. The situation did depend on the particular weekend classroom as well as the student needs. In addition, the slide decks we created were thoughtful, meaningful, and engaging and included many videos and audios of ourselves teaching tricky concepts. Some students couldn't take advantage of all the opportunities and we told them to do their best as we all were doing. There were a few families that also asked for enrichment and it wasn't perfect, but the teachers were always there for the children. And finally, I ask for something we often remind the children: kindness and patience. And please know that this statement is not discounting in any way the many people who have been supportive, both in the parent and staff groups at DPS. However, this needs to be said. When we don't agree with someone or something doesn't go the way we hoped, we need to have our feelings, but we also need to be kind about it. All the meanness and negativity should not be happening in our school community. This is not directed at group against group. It's just a message for all of us to remember, even within our particular school groups or family groups, even in situations outside of school. So this school year is going to be different, but different doesn't mean bad. So please, if we're not doing it, let's get back to a little more understanding and kindness towards one another so this very different year can actually rock. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Mrs. McGettigan. Our next speaker, Mary Jo Miller. You are unmuted and recognized.
Thank you. My name is Mary Jo Miller and I live at 52 Relingan Road. I'd like to thank the board for calling and the administration's participation in last week's special meeting. I found it helpful and wanted to follow up with a few comments. As I mentioned during public comment last week, virtual learning has been a challenge for my kindergarten, kindergartner. And for that reason, I have personally been in support of a full reopening. I hope that proceeds next week as planned, barring any unforeseen circumstances. We're all very aware that this is going to be a challenging year and as Dr. Adley has addressed, we need to be flexible and able to switch gears. One of the concerns for parents of young learners is that if, and probably more realistically when COVID cases increase, our K-2 learners, despite everyone's best efforts, will return to a learning model that just isn't appropriate for them. Based on the feedback that the youngest students are struggling, I would encourage administration to look at how we can improve the hybrid for K-2 and better serve them as learners. My opinion is that an attempt is made to get them in-person teaching daily in smaller groups for fewer hours per day. But I believe that the brilliant minds in our administration are best equipped and capable to figure out how we can improve K-2 learning. But it is critical a better plan is developed now before we are forced to return to that model. And while I may not agree with every decision Dr. Adley makes, I do trust his decision-making is in the best interest of our children. We cannot forget that he has 35 years of experience in education and is the expert on his staff, his buildings, and his resources. For example, the recent presumed, now determined negative COVID case at Tokneak was communicated efficiently and calmly. In this new normal, it is near impossible to please all parents, students, and staff, as is demonstrated by the teachers' union rally occurring outside the building. Communication and collaboration with the board and the community certainly needs improvement, especially during an unprecedented time, but this is a pandemic, a process, and it's important to work together and respect everyone's role if we already have any success. Thank you for listening tonight.
Thank you, Mrs. Miller. Our next speaker, please.
Ms. Lindsay Krushank, you are unmuted and recognized.
Hi, Lindsay Krushank. I live at 70 Taylor Avenue, Norwalk, Connecticut. After a few short weeks, my students have found a cherished place in my heart. I'm an eighth-grade teacher and a team leader at Middlesex. Last week, one of them asked me if the other students would be returning. I said, "That's the plan," and then watched to gauge his reaction. How do you feel about that? Even though my, even through my fogged-up face shield, I could see the worry on his face. "I have asthma," he said. "I'm afraid of what will happen when everyone comes back." It's important that the board and parents know that in many cases, students are not three feet apart from one another, both when wearing masks and not. This isn't due to a lack of care or foresight by our dedicated custodians and building administrators. It's just simply not possible to fit 25 students into our classroom space and maintain the distance recommended by the CDC. At the start of school, I invited central services three times to visit my classrooms to help troubleshoot this issue while hybrid. My team is solution-focused. We want to be in the classroom with students. And we asked for help in creatively configuring desks to maintain physical distance and meet IEP requirements for preferential seating close to instruction. Since school began, no central services administrator has acted on my invitation. I don't know how we can maintain recommended physical distancing when every seat in the classroom is filled. Staff are very concerned that students are speaking and coughing without masks on during lunchtime. The science shows us that these types of scenarios spread the virus. We have proposed several options to central services of how to address this concern. Some ideas have been considered, but we are concerned that we're running out of time. We have suggested that students eat quietly and then mask up to socialize, play, collaborate, and more for the rest of the lunch period. Instead, students have been removing their masks for up to 40 minutes, loudly speaking, sneezing, coughing, and at times shouting, less than three feet apart from one another in small classrooms, many of which do not have windows that open or AC that properly circulates the air. Teachers are solution-focused. We are used to being handed a challenge, collaborating and brainstorming and fixing it, often with limited resources. Here are some solutions that we have proposed. Provide every space with disposable cleaning supplies. A few teachers at my school were just given ripped t-shirts to clean their classrooms. There have been no laundering of these rags or cloths since they were given out in the first week of school. Please provide us with one day of remote learning each week so that the building can be properly disinfected. We appreciate what our building administration has tried to accomplish with limited resources and time. Parents need to know the reality, which is that our schools are just not ready for a full reopening. Teachers and building leadership may be able to tackle this immense challenge, but only if we have basic resources to prepare us for the road ahead. We desperately want to be teaching our children in person every day, but only when it is safe for all to do so. Please remember, we are not just advocating for the safety of adults. These measures protect your precious children, who we love. We are concerned for the health and safety of the children of Darien, which is our ultimate priority. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Krushank. Our next speaker, please.
John Dunn, you are unmuted and recognized.
My name is John Dunn and I reside at 175 Raymond Street. As I've listened to the public comments over the past several meetings, spoken with dozens of concerned parents, and signed numerous petitions, the overwhelming desire to get our kids back to full in-person learning is clear. It is beyond time for this to happen. The science and facts support this. The majority of surveyed parents and teachers support this. The time is now. Our elected Board of Ed must take a stand and vote in favor of item eight on tonight's agenda. The last month has not been a transition period a superintendent Adley has so often described as hybrid blame. To put it politely, it has been a frustrating and challenging month, marked by technological and connectivity issues, minimal hours of online learning, and a one-size-fits-all approach that assumes a five-year-old kindergartner and a 17-year-old high school senior have the same needs and abilities. Simply said, the very foundations of the Darien Public Schools' educational integrity are at stake here. Students are living in an educational netherworld, only in school 40% of the time. This is not a viable, long-term educational model for our children going forward. Last week, the BOE heard from one parent who had not been able to access a single Zoom class meeting. On Friday, my wife, who serves as a room mom, was seemingly the only one able to access the lessons and ended up providing impromptu tech support to other parents. How is this meeting the educational needs of our kids? We must do better. We can return to full-in-person school without further delay. The state requires four and a half hours of daily elementary remote learning. However, my daughter's remote kindergarten assignments have ranged from 30 minutes to three hours. On the very best day, this doesn't meet the mandate. How will my daughter actually learn in this type of limited educational hybrid model? My wife has a business degree and has done her best to serve as a stand-in teacher three days a week during remote learning. The stopgap measure lowers the quality of education. Our kids need to be in the classroom five days per week with professionals to truly thrive. Nobody's being forced to return full-time. Students and parents who feel uncomfortable have the option of full remote learning. Only a small number have actually chosen this. Faculty and staff have options too. As union leader Jocelyn Delancy reminded us in September 16th op-ed, she wrote of the full return, quote, "You may lose teachers to other districts. There are quite a few across the country, county, with openings and with stakeholders who are being kinder to teachers," end quote. While I'll let you determine if her words were a veiled threat or an ominous warning, even she clearly understands that teachers have other employment options if they feel unsafe for the full reopening. Students have missed enough school already. Delaying the full return by a month has only put our kids further behind and has damaged the educational integrity of our once-grade public school system. Our children deserve the very best education possible and that can only happen when they return to the classroom full-time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dunn. Our next speaker.
Toni Ann Rongo, you are unmuted and recognized.
Hi, my name is Toni Ann Rongo. I live at 57 Camp Ave. I have a first and third grader at Ox Ridge and I'm a third-grade teacher at Ox Ridge as well. First off, it has been wonderful to be back in person with my third graders in the hybrid model. Although there are challenges that we face with technology and safety protocols, it's truly amazing to be teaching and learning together in the classroom again. With that being said, I do have concerns about maintaining the safety of my students and their families, my coworkers, and my own family as we prepare for a full-in-person return to school on the 29th. Currently in the hybrid model with cohorts of seven students in my class, desks are approximately five and a half feet apart, not the six feet that is recommended for removing masks for lunch and snack. As of the 29th, student desks will only be three feet apart. In the recent communication sent home regarding a presumed case of COVID-19 at one of our schools, the district states that we should continue to keep six feet apart from anyone that is not a member of our family, yet we will be unable to do so in our classrooms once we all return. We will be unable to follow the same protocols that are required in restaurants, stores, and all other public spaces. How are schools any different than any other public space? Would you be okay with your child or yourself sitting three feet apart from strangers indoors with no mask on? This is what we're being told is okay for our students and staff in school during lunch and snack. Is the district considering further safety measures? Will Plexiglas be placed on student desks that won't be six feet apart while eating? Will there be alternate locations in the building for a portion of our class to eat so that social distancing can be maintained? I do understand that there may be plans already made. However, those of us on the frontlines, teachers, paraprofessionals, and other support staff who monitor this lunchtime, need to know these plans well before the day all kids return. We are the ones for the return of a full class of students in just three more school days. We are the ones who will be enforcing these protocols, yet no plans have been communicated to us. We need to know now so we are ready and prepared to put them into action by Tuesday. Hand washing is the most important safety protocol that has been enforced in classrooms before and after eating. In my third-grade class with cohorts of seven students, we spend approximately 40 minutes a day washing hands for snack and lunch. On the 29th, this amount of time will at least double. That's one hour, 20 minutes of hand washing throughout the school day. Although time-consuming, it is imperative. This will inevitably impact our instructional time once all students return. We will certainly all try our best to get as much as we can do, get done, but there just aren't enough hours in the school day to accomplish all the teaching, learning, and safety measures that need to be followed. We aren't teaching during normal times. This is a pandemic. Has the board considered the educational impacts once we have up to 25 kids in class? Will curriculum scope and sequences and pacing guides continue to be modified to accommodate the time that will be lost? I hope your answers to these questions is yes. We know, we are aware because we are living and teaching and learning during a pandemic. In closing, I want so badly to return full-time in person with my entire class and I want my own children to be back at school in person with their teachers and classmates every day, but not at the expense of the safety and health of our children. And I hope the board, our administration, and families understand the reality of our school days once all students are in person. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mrs. Rongo. Our next speaker, please.
Jesse Sersosimo, you are unmuted and recognized.
Hi, good evening. Jesse Sersosimo, 16 Overlook Avenue, Beacon, New York. The video. Hi, good evening. I'm a teacher at Darien High School. In August, the administration invited us to submit questions regarding the district reentry plan. When a colleague asked why testing is not part of our plan, he was given a link to CDC guidance. The guidance suggested it wasn't even necessary to test individuals who had direct sustained contact with known positive cases. Last Thursday, The New York Times reported that such guidance, including a document titled "The Importance of Reopening Schools," was not drafted by the CDC at all, but dropped in by outside officials against CDC wishes. The story grew more convoluted over the weekend when the CDC updated guidance again to warn of the danger of aerosol transmission and the inadequacy of even six-foot distance in many situations. Then, when backlash came, it was abruptly removed on Monday morning. Here's what is clear: federal guidance lacks credibility. Yet, the district continues to peg its plan on guidance that has been plainly exposed as political and not in the best interests of the health and safety of the school community. Well, what's the alternative? Leadership. Leadership based in common sense and a heightened regard for human life. Instead, district policy has been driven by expedience and a rush to please that dismiss the clearly articulated reservations of those who actually work in our buildings to educate children. Our neighbors in Fairfield are showing leadership. Last week, their district asked, "Is it realistic to think that you can bring kids back at a full capacity and not create a situation where you're just asking for trouble?" They admit that it will be impossible for the district schools to consistently comply with state distance guidelines if students return to buildings full-time because, quote, "It's not just a matter of how far apart desks are in a classroom." Finally, Fairfield positions itself as a leader in safeguarding the school community when it acknowledges that current guidelines leave an enormous loophole that one could walk through, but that, quote, "We don't think that's a responsible decision to take." Darien High School, now operating at half-capacity, is an unsafe building for students and staff. The district's stated mitigation strategies are not being met due to large classes and a woeful lack of protocol enforcement. Unmasked lunches have students literally breathing down the necks of up to eight different cohorts in a given schedule rotation, canceling the harm reduction of all the other mitigation strategies. It's time to acknowledge that the secondary ed situation is unlike that in the primary schools and calls for different solutions. At the high school, we teach adult persons, fully susceptible to contracting and spreading COVID-19. Our challenges teaching with technology are fewer, while our risky contacts in the building are greater. I'm asking this board to step up, to take a leadership role, and admit that there are serious problems that must be addressed first to avert the clearly foreseeable harm of packing an already unsafe building to full capacity. Thank you for your time.
Elizabeth Drew, you are unmuted and recognized.
Hi, my name's Elizabeth Drew. I reside at 14 DeBois Street. I have a kindergartner and second grader at Henley. First and foremost, I want to take the time to thank the teachers and the administrators who are working so extra hard for our children. If there are any teachers on this call, which there are, I can see, I would like to send you a virtual hug. You're amazing. When my children are in school, they are so happy. They are delighted, actually. They are thriving. And this is because of our teachers and our administration. Thank you. I'm so sorry for the teachers who do not feel safe going back. That's got to be a really scary position to be in. From what I understand from my children's teachers, and I know it's not everyone, it does seem that they would prefer to be back in the class with them. I also want to thank Dr. Adley and the Board of Ed for hearing us tonight. You have all done an amazing job and I know what a big task this is for you all. I'm speaking first to voice my opinion that Darien families are begging to go back to in-person school five days a week, especially in the younger demographic of kindergarten through second grade. So much of learning at this young age cannot be done at home through a computer, without a teacher, without peers. These are crucial developmental years for our young children and they are missing out on them. I want to let you know that on the days that they are home learning, there is very little learning going on. Last week, one day, and today, for my kindergartner, her Henley teacher lost connectivity to no fault of her own on her computer, and so she was so apologetic about it, but very unavailable all day. That is not uncommon. The distractions when not in school, the problems with technology, the lack of interest and motivation has resulted in a real problem for my children and so many other children and families here in Darien. I want to also speak on a major concern I have regarding the real possibility that DPS returns to hybrid or remote model if we reach the numbers of 14 or 25 cases respectively. I'm asking that DPS puts in place a plan if this happens for our young learners. Can we utilize the space in our town and make sure all our young learners are back five days a week? If it's the older demographic of middle and high school students, which is what I've been hearing, is a concern for spreading COVID, can we utilize that space to make sure that our young learners are back full-time? Finally, I want to ask Dr. Adley and the Board of Ed how we came up with the numbers of 1425. I don't know if I missed that. They seem fairly arbitrary to me and I'd just like to know, they're not even 1% of our town population. Again, thank you very much, Dr. Adley. Thank you very much, Dr. Adley and the Board of Ed.
Thank you, Mrs. Drew. Our next speaker.
Katie Gale, you are unmuted and recognized.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Katie Gale. I reside at 44 Beech U Drive in Stamford, Connecticut. I'm a fifth-grade teacher at Henley School and this is my 27th year teaching, 25th year in Darien. I'd like to thank the board and the administration and the community for taking this time to listen. I am one of the almost 500 teachers who happily welcomes their students back in the most unusual circumstance. So glad to be able to see them face-to-face and make those needed connections that really helped drive our ability to reach them with our teaching. I'm also one of your teachers who holds herself to high academic standards. After all, I teach in Darien, Connecticut. I realize that right from the top down, we have been put in an untenable situation with this pandemic while considering safety and educational integrity. Everything has been rushed to completion. This year will not, cannot be a typical Darien school year, not for students, not for parents, not for administrators or custodians or paraeducators, and not for teachers. If the teachers in this community are going to do right by your children, we need to be heard about the time we need for proper training and for the true input into how this modified curriculum is being rolled out. Teachers need time to learn and develop our skills on all the new platforms and technologies that have been introduced to us just a few short weeks ago. Parents of K-2 students will no doubt understand exactly what I'm talking about as I heard referred by an earlier speaker, as they have been struggling to learn these new technologies alongside their own children. Any parent who happened in on a Zoom meeting with their child may well have seen the difficulties that teachers are having in reaching students at school and those at home effectively. This is nigh on impossible and even more so without adequate training and time to practice, something none of us has really been given. The lessons during hybrid, particularly in elementary schools, have been modified so as to be attainable in this model. Every one of us understands that it is much more effective to have students in class to be able to read the room and see where there are misunderstandings, to allow students to learn from each other. This does not happen on a screen and so lessons take longer. Teachers need a seat at the table for planning for our remote learners and so lessons who have the ability to perceive, because they're the ones who can see how their students will receive something and what may need, they need by way of support or explanation. I'm mindful of raising my own children as a working, single mother prior to becoming an educator. As I focused on my career... As I focused on my career, I was leaving my children in before and after-school care, and I always felt that I was not doing right by them. And if I took some time to go on a field trip or help out at school, I knew I was not doing right by my career. It was a lose-lose situation, and that's what it feels like now. I cannot do right by my in-school students and my at-home students simultaneously, not without the proper training, time, and planning. None of your teachers can. And all of your teachers right now feel defeated. We need that time and that support. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Gale. Our next speaker, please.
Alicia Melberg, you are unmuted and recognized.
My name is Alicia Melberg, twenty-four, Christie Hill Road. Last week, I spoke publicly on the negative social and emotional effects remote learning had on our child this past spring. I stated that as we no longer had summer programs to promote this growth for our daughter, it was now time for the schools to provide this. I shared our personal story to illustrate what is occurring throughout our town. My stance strongly advocates for a five-day week for our students, especially our youngest learners. Since Thursday, I have heard the following comments and concerns from other families, and I quote, "I was up until eight PM last night trying to finish e-learning. This is harder than the spring. I feel cheated. This isn't right. Alicia, do we move? Our kids deserve more. What can we do to ensure a full opening September twenty-ninth?" unquote. "It's time to move forward. I support a vote by the BOE in favor of item eight on the agenda. I support the BOE to vote in favor of a five-day week return for our students no later than September twenty-ninth. I support the BOE and administration to work to better the remote platform for our families that choose remote learning and for preparation if a spike were to occur. It's time to move forward with a plan that puts our children first. It's time for the members of our community to be represented. Thank you."
Thank you, Mrs. Melberg. Our next speaker, please.
User Hardy's iPhone, you are unmuted and recognized.
Hi, my name's Kathy Hardy. I live at twenty-three Red Coat Pass. I'd like to echo what Elizabeth Drew said. My husband and I have a child with special needs. He has an individualized education plan, and he's been in the Darien School District since he was three years old, starting in the early learning program. It's one of the reasons we live in Darien, because we love the school district so much and all of the teachers, and we thank you all, and we thank you, Dr. Adley and the Board of Education for your tireless work that you've been doing in these unprecedented times. Remote learning is just really not appropriate for our child and his learning needs. He's not able to access remote learning without the supports in place that he has in school. Therefore, he's not able to access his IEP. On the days that he's home, which is three out of five days of the week, there has been no interaction with any of his service providers. It's imperative that schools open fully. We feel it's irresponsible of the Board of Education to us as taxpayers in the community. There's literally been no teaching taking place three out of the five days a week, which is totally unacceptable. Not voting on a full return to school is effectively voting against the plan presented by Dr. Adley and a vote to keep our kids from going back to school to receive the education promised to us. Thank you for your consideration in this most important matter, our children and their education. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Hardy. Our next speaker, please.
Kelly Swanson, you are unmuted and recognized.
Thank you. I'm Kelly Swanson. I reside at seven Fawn Hill Road, Beacon Falls. I am a twenty-eight-year dedicated teaching professional in the Darien Public Schools my entire career. I speak to you tonight candidly on behalf of my elementary school colleagues. As this year began, many changes have understandably had to take place because of COVID-19. Rollout for what schools would look like was very slow and communication on how teachers would be working in schools very last minute. The board has asked teachers to be flexible, and they have been. Teachers have had to multitask in ways they could never imagine. Training and technology readiness for teachers have been roadblocks in the vision that the board has created for both hybrid model and remote learners. While parents and administration have had much voice in the creation of these plans, teachers have not. While new teaching formats are being attempted by teachers across the district, there has been no feedback opportunity for teachers to provide professional concerns about these dictated plans. No one has asked teachers what is working in this model and what is not. No one has considered what is truly developmentally appropriate for primary elementary students versus upper elementary students. We've created a one-size-fits-all plan, and that's not meeting the developmental needs of our different-age learners. In creating a vision, there needs to be stop points to reflect, assess, problem-solve, and revise. This has not been a part of the process for Darien teachers. What we have been doing is putting out fires. Parents come to us for answers, and we're often in the dark. We have stretched our teachers too thin, asking them to be present for students in front of them while simultaneously supporting students remotely. Teachers have not had to, had, teachers have had to not only do the work they signed up for, but work of being psychologists, tech advisors to parents on systems they barely have had time to learn. No one is thinking about teachers as learners. If we want our teachers to be at their best for their students, we need to think about the mental health, safety, and well-being of our teachers, the implementers of these pre-made plans. We need to engage them in the process and the solutions and the vision. I employ the board to rethink its current plans for full live streaming and full in-person and be flexible and open-minded to other solutions. Our neighboring districts within the state have utilized plans where teachers were hired strictly to teach for remote students. Some have divided each class in half by doing an AM and PM sessions, avoiding some of the controversy over the lunch issue. Progress to move forward takes time. Teachers need to process and work through problems as implementers. Adopting new forms of teaching should engage a learning process. It should not be done haphazardly. It should engage all stakeholders, parents, administrators, and teachers. Understandably, this will take more time than any of us like, but to do things with efficacy and effectiveness, we need to all embrace that it will be slower than we like. Our teachers deserve better so that they can do better for their students. Right now, teachers feel set up for failure, and that's not where they want to be. The current plans are not manageable or sustainable for teachers. Please don't let this opportunity pass by.
You have reached time.
Our next speaker, please.
Lisa May Peterson, you are unmuted and recognized.
Hi, my name is Lisa Peterson, and I live at thirteen A C C Way in Norwalk, and I'm a teacher at Middlesex. Thank you for all of the time that you've put in on behalf of the schools. I'm here to voice my concerns about returning to full-time in-school learning next Tuesday. Teaching is the joy of my life, but I returned to school this fall with trepidation. As a cancer survivor, my at-risk status is not fully known. Despite my doctor's advice, remote teaching was not provided as an option for me and for my colleagues who are immune-compromised. My choices were to return with in-building accommodations or to take an unpaid leave of absence. I'm extremely grateful for all of the work that my administration and custodial staff have done in preparation for hybrid learning. They've done an amazing job making this work as well as they could within the limitations of a building that's too small for its population. My dear students are bravely donning their masks and learning science without hands-on access to shared lab materials. It's not ideal, but it's the safer choice for now. We were reminded by a Sunday email from Central Services to maintain social distancing at least six feet between yourself and others when outside of your home. Even with everyone's best efforts, it's impossible to fit double the student population into the current configuration. With all seats filled, students will not be anywhere close to six feet apart in all directions. It's physically impossible to make it so. There simply isn't enough space, and students will be closer than six feet apart all day long. We know that the virus is spread not only through coughing and sneezing, but by micro aerosols produced by breathing and talking. Air moves. It wafts around the classroom, over plexiglass, around seated students, and out the door. There's no feasible way that all of the aerosols that people produce during mask breaks and lunch could be flushed out of my room. I once visited the Hubble Space Telescope Lab, where positive pressure was used to expunge particles as soon as they were airborne. Middlesex does not have NASA technology. I'm worried that doubling the student population exposes many more students and staff with immune concerns to risk. There's simply no safe way to do this. It is a mathematical impossibility. My pleas that we take another close look at the safety of going all-in next Tuesday and that staff be offered the option to teach remotely, just as students have been given the choice to learn remotely while this pandemic persists. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Peterson. Our next speaker, please.
User K N Y A R A D Y, you are unmuted and recognized.
Good evening. My name is Kevin Nyaradi. I live at one Wilson Ridge Road. My wife and I are parents to three children in the Henley District. We have a kindergartner and second-grade twins. Thank you to, thank you to the Board of Ed, Dr. Adley, teachers, everyone within this great district that's working around the clock to find learning solutions for our children. I do firmly believe this is the best district in the state. And, you know, I hope, I hope, I hope it stays that way. I'll be brief and to the point. Very simply put, the challenges that come with homeschooling three young children have been insurmountable. These kids deserve more, and I plead to the district to reassess the plan for if and when COVID cases occur upon their return to school. I strongly believe that the district needs to prioritize as part of this plan the in-person learning for kindergarten to second-grade children at a minimum. I appreciate all the work that has certainly gone into this plan. I know it's required a ton of effort. I'm sure a lot of sleepless nights. But I do think that we can look a little further ahead and really assess what's going on with these young learners, because frankly, they're not learning the way they should. So I appreciate the opportunity to speak, and thank you again for all the tireless work from everyone.
Thank you, Mr. Yard. Our next speaker.
Lenny Blumenthal, you are unmuted and recognized.
Hi, I'm Lenny Blumenthal. I live at seventeen Fairmead Road. My wife and I moved here seven years ago, and we moved here for the schools. So we have a great interest in the schools being as good as they can be. We have two children, a ten-year-old and an eight-year-old, a fifth grader and a third grader. We, I'd like to take this time first to thank Dr. Adley and the Board of Education for beginning the year as a hybrid model. I'm very concerned about the plan to go full-time next week. I do not feel comfortable with my children sitting all day three feet from other students. They'll be eating, drinking, taking mask breaks within feet of each other. The hybrid model is safer for all the students because they're exposed to fewer students as well as the teachers and other staff in the school being exposed to fewer people. As the new superintendent to Darien, Dr. Adley, you've done a tremendous job getting to know all the stakeholders, involving the parents in crafting a vision for the school. However, when it comes to decisions around safety, your job is to make the decision, and there's pressure, I know from all sides, we hear it in these calls today. I don't feel the current plan offers a safe solution for the students to be full-time at this point, and we should put safety before learning. As much as we believe in education, a sick child is not going to learn very well, and sick teachers won't be able to teach very well. If, in fact, the plan is that the students will be, without masks, eating, drinking, and taking mask breaks inside a building within six feet or less of each other, then I would like to understand what part of the known science of COVID are we not believing? There, it's undisputed that inside without masks is going to spread COVID. We all feel comfortable living in here in Darien. The COVID numbers have been very good now for months, and that's great. However, there's no control on travel in the town. There's no control on travel in the county, in the state, or in this country. The numbers can change very quickly. If anyone has any doubts how fast these things can happen, I'm sure a lot of people have heard about the wedding in Maine last month, sixty-two attendees. There's now two-hundred-and-seventy people with COVID and eight deaths. If hybrid learning is not working, and I will tell you as the father who is sitting home trying to work, while my wife is out, outside of the house working, trying to keep my eight-year-old son focused on the e-learning days, I can tell you that I don't think the hybrid learning is working great. However...
Blumenthal, I'm sorry you have reached time.
Our next speaker, please.
Hillary Graham, you are unmuted and recognized.
Hello, I'm Hillary Graham, and I live at fifteen Coker Road in Trumbull, and I'm a teacher at the high school. At the beginning of the year, teachers expressed concern to Dr. Adley about the lunch plan. The current hybrid plan has students eating in classrooms with, hopefully, six feet between them. Before school, my colleague Guy took tape measures and tried various desk configurations in our shared room to allow for the six feet. At the time, we were only arranging twelve desks, which was the maximum size we would need for the hybrid, and still we could not find a configuration that would work with only twelve. With the all-in model, some classes will have over twenty students. That's not even three feet, not even three feet of distancing will be possible. These students have been and will continue to be unmasked and largely unsupervised, eating, laughing, and socializing with a new group of peers each day during these lunch periods. We're getting down to the wire, and these health concerns persist at the high school. As the board knows, the curriculum we offer makes it impossible to cohort in the way the elementary schools are able to. Just today, our neighbors in New Canaan had to quarantine fifty-five students at their high school after two positive cases were confirmed. When asked about how this may affect the reentry plan, their superintendent commented, quote, "Because we are in hybrid, we had those positive cases. It made it much simpler. If we go full in next Tuesday without better mitigation strategies in place, we won't have that safety net." Beyond the health concerns, the all-in model at the high school does not offer the best education possible during a pandemic. My subject, English, among others, thrives on student-led exploration and discussion. Rarely during normal times would you find me lecturing while students sat silently taking notes. Instead, students usually learn through collaboration, working with their peers to reach new understandings. This year, however, the constraints of pandemic have made group work nearly impossible. Students must face forward in straight rows. This configuration means that they're almost always directing answers at me rather than dialoguing with their peers. The exception to this has been when I've been able to put my online students in Zoom breakout rooms and my in-class students in small socially-distanced group. Group work only possible with at least half the, on, half the students learning through online at remote locations, sorry, allows students to bounce ideas off their peers and put forth theories that they may have been too shy to say to the whole class. It allows them to develop their thinking, take intellectual risks, and form insights that they rarely would have gotten to on their own. With the all-in model, the physical space to do this disappears. I will not have the capacity to sign each group a section of the room where they can hear their group members while still sitting a safe distance from them. Then, the eighty-five-minute block will then have to consist of lectures and independent work, which is not best practice. I know the hybrid model is not working for all stakeholders at all grade levels, but the high school it seems to be. Secondary ed has much different health and educational needs and risks than our elementary counterparts. I ask the board to assess which model best meets the needs of each group instead of adhering to...
Graham, you have reached time.
Our next speaker, please.
Sarah Sprock, you are unmuted and recognized.
Hi, my name is Sarah Sprock, and I live at twenty-two McAllister in Norwalk. I'm a fourth-grade teacher at Oxridge, and teaching is my passion and all I've ever wanted to do since I was in the third grade. I refer to my students as my kids, and I look after them as if they were exactly that, my kids. I'm speaking here tonight in hopes for answers and clarity on how we will protect our students, their families, my coworkers, and myself during the hybrid model and when we move to full in-person on September twenty-ninth. I was moved to a portable classroom to accommodate my class of twenty-four students this year. In years past, I wouldn't have ever thought twice about this number. However, in years past, I didn't have to worry about the current health pandemic, social distancing, or possibly bringing this home to my five-month-olds. Many classrooms are not as safe as they could possibly be for students, even in our current hybrid model. Here are just a few of my concerns. First, two fourth-grade teachers were moved to portable classrooms. Our colleague is in a double classroom and has the same number of students for in-person learning as myself, twenty-four students. We know that social distancing is one of the primary safety measures taken in order to reduce the risk of COVID-19. There are many policies in place for maximum capacity... There are many policies in place for maximum capacity indoors to ensure safety. What is the safest maximum capacity for classrooms? Does the capacity depend on square footage? What is being done to ensure students and staff are within safe capacities, given the significant difference in room size to accommodate the same number of students? In many classrooms, there's not enough space to provide six feet for our students during lunch, including my own. With cohorts of twelve to thirteen students, they are currently getting less than six feet to eat lunch without masks on. I've asked several times for clarification on what should be done to ensure that students are safe while eating lunch and have sent many emails explaining my concern, but I'm still waiting for a response. Is it safe for students to eat lunch less than six feet apart without masks on? What happens next week when students will be three feet apart eating lunch without masks on? How do I respond to my students when they ask me the same question? The portable classrooms are fortunate enough to have a portable sink. However, there's still one portable classroom without a sink. These provide about forty-two hand washes before needing to be refilled. This isn't even sufficient enough water for my class of twenty-four students to wash their hands before and after lunch, yet alone other times during the day. My sink has already run out on students in the middle of hand washing several times covered in soap in this current hybrid model. Um, with twelve students, even with the sink being refilled throughout the day. We've been told time and time again that the best defense against COVID- nineteen is hand washing. If the sinks are running out while students are in the middle of hand washing now in the hybrid model, how will we ensure that there's enough water for everyone to wash their hands throughout the day on September twenty-ninth? When will the other portable classroom receive a sink? In order for us to be able to come back to school on September twenty-ninth, these questions need to be addressed in order to keep everyone safe, healthy, and educated during this pandemic. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Sprock. Our next teacher, the next speaker, please.
Jocelyn Delancy. You are unmuted and recognized.
Hi, Jocelyn Delancy, one-ten Commons Park North, Stanford, Connecticut. Um, I've been a committed teacher in the Darien Public Schools for seventeen years. I absolutely adore my current five Ders, and I have of over two hundred who can still call five D their home. I love my current class. As a matter of fact, today I played kickball with them, four boys and three girls. And because they needed another girl, I played on the girl team with a mask, running around the bases. I can't tell you how hard that was, and I cannot wait to have the rest of my ten students to come in so that I don't have to play kickball. We have never said we don't want our kids all in school. We have asked for safety. And as you have heard from many teachers tonight, there are conditions within our district that are not necessarily as safe as they could be within the hybrid model. And they definitely will not be as safe as they can be when we are all in next week. We would like the time to be able to look at what is working and what is not working, and we would like to make sure that we fix those things so that when our kids come back in, we can give them the quality education that we know they deserve and that we want to give and are prepared to give when we can. We would like to also say that we have been heard in many ways, but there are many ways that we haven't. And the task force ended on June, I think, twenty-fourth, but maybe a little later than that. I understand that the board wants us to be a partnership, and we want to be a partnership too. We are not trying to be adversarial. You had over a hundred teachers outside the Board of Ed tonight hoping to be heard because they feel, as some, another teacher said, defeated. We want to be successful. We want to give your students, every one of them, within whatever model it is, a hundred percent of ourselves, and we have been. And I, I've heard some comments, and I just want to say that I don't have failed threats. I don't have any intention of bargaining in bad faith. I just am desperate to make sure that the teachers that you have feel safe and supported and connected to this community because we love this community, and we want it safe, every single stakeholder. And that's all I have to say tonight. Thank you.
Wow. Thank you, Mrs. Delancy. Our next speaker, please.
E. Whitney Evans. You are unmuted and recognized.
Hi, my name is Whitney Evans, and I reside at fifty-two DuBois Street in Darien. I want to preface my remarks tonight by emphasizing my appreciation for the work of the Darien teachers, administrators, and board members for getting back, students back to the classrooms this fall. There are so many considerations to be made in opening our schools from the education and well-being of our children to the safety of our educators and greater community. And in that vein, I do not envy the position of Dr. Adley in the board and establishing protocols to safely welcome students back to school full-time. However, as a trained epidemiologist and an academic, the best anyone can do in this pandemic is to use evidence to guide our decision-making. Just as our practitioners have learned to care more effectively for patients with COVID- nineteen from the success, successes and failures of treating previous patients over the last six months. School administrators much, must approach educating our students using data from what has worked nationally and internationally. In this case, the CDC recommends that school administrators consider transmission rates in the immediate community. In Darien, this has been zero since August. They must also consider data from other schools that have successfully reopened. Large research studies coming out of France, China, and the United States support that transmission rates in children are very low, particularly amongst our youngest learners. Further, they must consider the CDC reopening guidelines as it relates to ventilation in the classroom, social distancing, wearing masks, and cohorting. Using these data along with the evidence that older students may spread the disease at greater rates, I urge the board to consider making decisions for each school level, independent from one another. I appreciate that this year is going to look different from every other year for my own children's education. But I also request that our children be provided the opportunity to go back full-time in person, given the aforementioned data, until the time at which they change. Finally, as a mother of a kindergartner and a fourth grader at Henley Elementary School, I would like the administration to understand how different remote learning is for our youngest learners. Even my fourth grader has been very successful in remote learning through the incredible support of her teacher and the administrators at Henley. However, the hybrid lessons for our youngest learners, particularly those in kindergarten through second grade, are incredibly challenging. Last week, we were unable to join any Zoom meetings, and we were not provided the correct workbook or worksheets to accompany the slide decks. Thus, I would ask the district to consider these youngest learners independently from our owner learners, older learners, as they decide how to progress in reopening. Independent of this decision, I urge administrators to work more closely with the incredible teachers in Darien to develop remote learning lessons that are more engaging to better prepare for the possibility for full, full remote learning that may became, excuse me, may become a necessity during the flu season later this year. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Evans. Our next speaker, please.
Jessica Shu. You are unmuted and recognized. Mrs. Shu, you are on mute.
Sorry about that. I thought I was unmuted. I'm Jessica Shu. I live at twenty-Fitch Ave. Um, I just wanted to thank the Board of Ed and all the teachers, staff, custodians, everyone who's been working so hard to get our kids back. This has been challenging for everyone, I'm sure. Um, and I know that there are parents that want to go back in full five-day. They wanted it from the start. Um, I would also love to not be in a pandemic right now. Um, I just really wanted to say thanks to Dr. Adley for putting our kids' safety first. And I know that there is data that can show us that it could be fine, and then there's also data showing that it could not be fine, such as the summer camp in Georgia where plenty of really young kids contracted it. So um, I just, I um, I just wanted to say thanks for putting our kid, our kids' safety first, and I hope you continue to do that. I'm super nervous about going back in full five-day um, in a week. But um, I know that uh, my third grader had uh, some real depression in the spring.
I'm on the Board of Ed meeting.
So I would never choose to go fully remote right now. It brings my kids, I have a first grader and a third grader, so much joy to go in. And a token, they have done such an incredible job. Like, I feel no anxiety watching them run with their mask on into school. Um, but that's because they're in smaller groups and they can maintain some distance. So um, you know, it's not like parents who are nervous would be happy to go full remote because we really struggled. Um, and I was a teacher before I had kids, so I have experience with teaching, and it was still not good, um, not ideal. So that's it. I just want to thank you and hope you uh, continue to think of their safety first. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Shu. Our next speaker, please.
Andrea J. You are unmuted and recognized.
Hi. My name is Andrea Girassi, five Old Parish Road. I'm going to keep this short. I have two elementary-age children, a kindergartner and a second grader. Every day, they tell me how much they hate learning on a computer and ask me why they can't attend school every day. I heard about the protests that took place tonight by our teachers, and I'm appalled. Every other industry has gone back to work, no questions asked. Why do some teachers feel like an exception should be made for them? You chose a career to educate our young. If you no longer want to choose that occupation, I'm sure there are many eager young graduates who would be happy to fill your positions. You've already been in school teaching for weeks, so what is the issue? If proper protocols are followed, there should be little to no risk of getting sick anyway if we keep our sick children home as one normally would. And let me remind you that this virus carries about a point zero four percent death rate. I am exhausted pretending to be afraid of a virus with a ninety-nine point nine-six percent survival rate in healthy individuals with most, most deaths occurring in the elderly with two-point-six-plus comorbidities. And I have not heard of one case of a student infecting a teacher. Let me end by asking you all this. Where is the end in sight? Thank you.
Our next speaker, please.
Megan Thornton. You are unmuted and recognized.
There I am. Hi, everybody. First of all, I, my, my name is Eric Romer. I'm at forty-nine Birch Road. Uh, my wife Megan uh, actually is not at the computer right now, but this is her account. The, uh, first of all, I want to thank everybody. Uh, we have, we have two, a kindergartner and a first grader at Oxridge, and I think the staff has been really stellar in this, uh, in this trying time. And as the, uh, as the son of a thirty-five-year public school teacher, uh, you know, I, I've firsthand experienced what these folks go through and, and how difficult it, it definitely is. That being said, I mean, I bring a little bit of a interesting, uh, interesting turn on this one. So I, I, I mean, these, these thoughts are myself and not representative of my firm. Uh, I run a global insurance and reinsurance risk trading business for a global money center bank. I have a staff of actuaries and replete with all sorts of access to specialized insurance providers, specialized pandemic experts, and all the like. Uh, we have, we have a lot of resources in that regard. What I can say, and I think most people, it's pretty evident, uh, that everything that is being stated about this pandemic globally is politicized in one way or the other. Uh, and sadly, that is, uh, that is, that is definitely acting in contravention to the safety of individuals, regardless of their age, social position, et cetera. Um, I've been pushing an issue here in town for several weeks, uh, to no avail. You know, the, if you look at, you look at the most mercenary and effective strategies, uh, in modern society, let's look at professional sports and what they do. These people aren't, you know, going outside their bubble. They're tested constantly, right? You have complete limitation on movement and all that. Well, why is that? Why? Because you have hundreds of millions of dollars at stake, and the livelihood of individual athletes that are, you know, that are definitely, they're definitely at risk. Otherwise, they wouldn't be doing this, right? So sadly, I think that any plan without large-scale testing is doomed to fail. And given that we do not live in Communist China, uh, we're not about to mandatorily test every resident of Darien, state of Connecticut, or resident of the United States of America. That's not going to happen. But what can happen is wastewater surveying. Uh, I've, I actually had an exchange with the head of the Department of Health in Darien, David Nowf, who told me that wastewater, uh, wastewater surveying and testing is experimental, and we don't have the resources to do it. Yale is doing something in Stanford and a few other cities, but there are no plans to do any of this. Um, it's complete hogwash. It's absolutely untrue. Uh, in the United States, wastewater screening has been done since the nineteen-fifties in individual neighborhoods, individual buildings, and even now today at numerous college campuses, they're doing exactly that and able to, able to test mass quantities of people without violating their similarities and giving you an assessment of how much COVID actually is there. I don't care what the, you know, statistics say. There are no, there are no infections in Darien. There absolutely are infections in Darien. There absolutely are infections in the schools right now. Just no one knows. This thing can be asymptomatic. You have a long incubation period, and unless someone's.
Mr. Roman, you have, you have reached time.
Thank you. Our next speaker.
Sarah True. You are unmuted and recognized.
Hi, my name's Sarah True. Um, I live at sixteen Locust Hill Road. I have a sixth grader at Middlesex and a second grader at Henley. Um, first of all, I just want to thank um, all of the teachers for their hard work and dedication during this time, uh, as well as the board and Dr. Adley. I know that we are living in unprecedented times, and uh, there aren't a lot of good answers for any of us right now. That being said, um, I want to echo what many of the parents who have spoken tonight have said in that I feel that is absolutely necessary that our children be back in school five days a week. From a social, emotional, as well as educational standpoint, uh, it is, it is so important. And the challenges that e-learning has created for particularly my second grader are, you know, it's, it's, it's constant tears, frustration, anxiety. And having him back in school this fall, he has totally become excited about learning again, and you know, just, he's happy. And I, I really feel that the benefit of having them in school five days a week, especially at the K through two level, it, it, at this point outweighs the risk. We have had no cases um, since we've gone back to school. Not to say that we won't, but um, I just really want to voice that as, as my opinion. And quite frankly, the fact that we're going back on Tuesday and we're still talking about, you know, how we're going to eat in the cafeteria is, is very frightening to me because I don't understand how we've gotten this far and, and haven't planned for that. Um, there's got to be a creative way for, for us to make this, this work as a community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. True. Are there any more speakers?
There is. Karen Cummins. You are unmuted and recognized.
Hi, everybody. Thank you very much. Uh, Karen Cummins. Uh, I have two kids in the, uh, in Middlesex, middle school. And I'm just going to echo quickly the, the thank you to, to the board and Dr. Adley and all, and all of the teachers. I've seen many of them here tonight who my kids have had. Um, so um, you know, I desperately want my kids who are in the middle school, who are managing with remote uh, learning, although there are a lot of issues and problems. Um, I desperately want them to go back full five days a week. However, I also want to know that they are going back under the safest conditions. And I think anybody who has been in any of our schools, of which pretty much all of our, of all of us parents have, you know, it, it's just by intuition alone, I think we all know that you can't put twenty-five kids in any of those classrooms and keep them even, I'm skeptical you can even keep them three feet apart, and I'm hearing a lot of the teachers echo that tonight. Um, a couple of themes, very clear themes that I'm hearing tonight, and I was also on the Board of Ed call last week that was, that was called somewhat last minute, is the parents of K through two are really struggling, and I, I really empathize with those parents. Um, I'm also hearing overwhelmingly from these teachers that they do not feel that conditions will be safe with the given protocols and guidelines uh, from every public health official, health official that I, I've heard, and I think all of us have heard, that six feet really is the minimum distance. Uh, I'm not even comfortable with three feet. And I don't think we can dismiss what these teachers are saying. I think they need to be heard. They are in the classroom, in the school, with our kids every single day. And I think that's absolutely critical. So I would just implore the board and the administration, to get really creative, get innovative, consider perhaps a different plan for K through two, look at other options for maintaining the six-foot distance. Are there other places in town that we can leverage? How can we give the teachers some time to get up to speed technically? Because I think that is an obstacle and it's clear from what I'm hearing that they are not, they don't feel like they have had the time to adequately be trained. I don't think any of our kids are going to get a great education if that doesn't happen. I would advocate at least delaying a full reopening for a week. If that buys more time, I don't think there's any magic to the 29th, other than that I know many parents are desperate, especially the parents of young kids, to get their kids back. And I'm hearing that loud and clear. But I don't see that, that September 29th has any magical meaning to it.
Coming, you have surpassed time. Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Dawn McIntyre, you are unmuted and recognized. The next speaker, Joshua Pike, you are unmuted and recognized.
Hi, good evening. My name is Josh Pike. I live at 18 Park Lane in Darien. I'm the parent of two kids, a second grader and a kid in homeschool, and we have a newborn as well. Sorry, I'm just putting myself on video. I would just like to echo a lot of what the people have said on these earlier calls from a parent's perspective. With the K through two, the learning issues remotely have been very difficult. There are a lot of challenges, especially with the kindergartner who cannot read yet and how you, the parent has to sit there and navigate complicated systems. I would just urge the board and the superintendent to think about creative solutions and treat the younger children who are in their formative years of learning differently than the middle schoolers and high schoolers who are going to be more successful at remote learning and learning by themselves on Zoom calls. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pike. Our next speaker.
Deb Daniel, you are unmuted and recognized. The next speaker, Kathy's iPhone, you are unmuted and recognized.
Do we have a speaker on the line?
We do not. She muted up again. The next speaker, Greg Grambling. You are unmuted and recognized.
Hi, this is actually Catherine Grambling from 11 Blueberry Lane. I am speaking as a concerned parent and former first and sixth grade teacher with a master's degree in special education. Despite my experience and background in education, which has made the past few weeks and prior months less painful for our family, I can understand and share the feelings of anxiety, frustration and despair expressed by other parents attempting to navigate remote learning. Teaching your own children, especially if they are young, on a computer screen is incredibly difficult and presents unique challenges that I never faced in the classroom. The shortfalls of the current remote learning program are clear. There is essentially no teaching for my first grade son three out of five days a week, which I have had to augment with lesson plans from outside the Darien provided curriculum. This is not possible for the vast majority of parents in Darien who have no formal training or are managing two jobs, which means their kids are receiving no education 60% of the time. Tonight, teachers have expressed concern about going back, given no plan or training. This concern made sense six months ago in March, or possibly even on August 10th, when the reopening plan was announced. Why haven't teachers and the administration been spending the last half year planning and training? What is another week or month going to accomplish? Several teachers were on the team that was formed to assemble the reopening plan. No independent parents were on this team. The sudden uprising of teachers seven days before our kids were expecting to go back to school is unfair to our kids and us and suggests that the teachers themselves are questioning the integrity and judgment of our superintendent and their peers who put this into place. On behalf of hundreds of parents, I support a vote to return our kids to school in person five days a week by no later than September 29th, which is the current plan presented by the administration. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Grambling. Our next speaker, please.
Dawn McIntyre, you are unmuted and recognized.
Okay, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, Mrs. McIntyre.
Okay, thank you so much. Quickly, I want everybody comments. I appreciate everyone. Everyone's here with the open heart and desire what's best for our kids and our teachers. I think we all need to be on the same page about something that's extremely important and people have been very confused about this. The CDC's strong recommendation and the AAP's recommendation with regard to reopening schools is six feet apart. It is not three feet apart. No child, no adult is immune to this pandemic. The lady who talked about the CDC and how they post the number of deaths, they post the number of survivors, but they do not list the number of those that never fully recover or return to a normal way of life. You can Google it. These individuals are called long haulers and they're called the in-betweens. It is not okay to take this coronavirus lightly, agreeing to something less than six feet. We all enter with a leap of faith when we even agree to six feet social distancing. The recommendation is not three feet. The AAP mentions in some of their writings that countries, some countries that have been highly, have put high monitored controls in place such as rapid testing, plexiglass on desktops, face shields and masks. These countries have had intermittent success with three feet social distancing, but this is not Darien's story. We cannot follow that model. Parents and teachers should not accept three feet as a viable option. Instead, we need to ask our Board of Ed and our superintendent to think outside of the box with regard to utilizing space in Darien so we can accomplish six feet. Are our spaces within our schools being creatively utilized for six feet social distancing? There is an empty 6,000 square foot building at 120 Tokenique Road that can accommodate 500 students plus while social distancing. Every child, every day with six feet social distancing should absolutely be accomplished for K to five. We need to see, our principals need to look at the schools, how many children can't be accommodated with six feet social distancing? And maybe we look at alternate spots with regard to middle school and high school. We can certainly learn from our neighboring school districts. An effective hybrid model that allows six feet social distancing for our high school kids must be accomplished. If every child is not able to be every day in the high school and middle school and six feet can't be accomplished, we really need to put safety first. I thank everyone for participating and caring.
Thank you, Mrs. McIntyre. Our next speaker.
Catherine Coslow, you are unmuted and recognized. Next speaker, Louise Waylett, you are unmuted and recognized.
Hello. Hi, can you hear me? Good evening, everyone. Firstly, I'd like to say it's wonderful, really wonderful to see teachers speaking on here tonight, especially those who taught my kids and who really are some of the best in the country. Shout out to Lisa Peterson. It's also great to see parents this week, with the exception of one, I think, voicing their concerns more politely than last week, which must have been de-energizing for our school administrators. Please stop it. Stop it. It's not helping anyone. It's clear from the range of concerns that have been voiced about in-person, hybrid and full remote set over several Board of Ed meetings that at some point, someone or some group is tasked with making the impossible decision that we're faced with and be tasked with updating that decision throughout this school year. I'm not here to share what I think is best for my student. And I encourage my student in, in the respect for his teachers that that really also means that he cares just as much about their health as he does about his own. I choose to place my trust in those who've spent decades, decades in education, and that is Dr. Adley. My family has lived through six superintendents in this school district in eight years. I would hate to see a superintendent of Dr. Adley's caliber leave due to poor treatment by our parent groups and to, to an extent, the cross-examination last week from some of the Board of Ed members themselves. We must come together and allow those in the position with the knowledge to provide those answers. We must allow them to focus on the issue in hand and not be constantly diverted by these challenges. I would really love to see every Board of Member, every Board of Ed member find some consensus tonight and really show its support and confidence in Dr. Adley. He really is an exceptional superintendent. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Brown. Are there any more speakers this evening?
Ms. Carolina Magui, you are unmuted and recognized.
My name is Karina Magui, 28 Kentstead Lane. I would like to once again offer my thanks to everyone working on making sure our kids and teachers, as well as every other person involved in our public schools, are safe in this return to school. I have heard many of the comments tonight and feel for everyone involved. I understand we're all tired, our nerves are fried, we are frustrated, we want lives to go back to normal. But sadly, we cannot just wish this to be a reality and ignore what is happening. We are living in unprecedented times, like it or not. There is a pandemic. I also work for a large financial institution and in our company, we have limited access to our offices. We are still working remotely mostly and have to comply with a health check on a daily basis. We need to keep at six feet from each other when we are in the office and we have to be masked at all times. I am not, I know that I am not a liar and many companies have delayed their coming back to work with employees until next year. To say differently is to not really speak the truth. I would also like to remind everyone else that we had limited financial resources and that our teachers have lives besides being teachers. And maybe they, 12 hours that they're away, they're not only dedicated to teaching our kids or to training themselves. Let's try to put ourselves on someone else's shoes for once. Again, a little bit of empathy will go a long way. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Magui. Are there any other speakers this evening?
Rob Mountain, you are unrecognized. Yours, I apologize, you are unmuted and recognized.
Before we start, the next speakers, what I would like to say is, speakers, if there is a comment that you agree with, it is, you are allowed to say you agree with someone who has gone before you and your comments will be recorded as such. We don't, we don't need everyone to repeat. We will give you your three minutes, but we will all, we are taking notes and we all will say if there's a comment that has gone before you that you agree with. I'm sorry. Our next speaker.
My name is Rob Mountain. I have two kids in Henley School. One is in kindergarten and one is in third grade. And first, nice to everybody. Everybody's been awesome. Henley is amazing. It's been incredible for us. I live at 15 Patsy Lane. But I just want to say, like, these young kids that we have, they are the future of America. Has anybody seen what's going on in America? Like, we don't educate these kids. Like, we are in trouble. Like, we need five days a week. They're not, like, they're trying as hard as they can at home. The parents are trying as hard. I know the teachers are trying as hard. Everybody is trying as hard as they can, but these are the future of America. Like, America is in, like, dire needs right now. And if these kids don't have an education, we are in desperate need. I have family in other states that are five days a week. They've started in early August or mid-August and they are doing fine. They have protocols if stuff goes down. They've had cases. They're still five days a week. It's great. I, you know what? I, I get in the city every single day since COVID started. I have driven in or taken the train or done every precaution. I have done temperature checks. I've gone there. I have driven in New York City every single day since it started. I have figured out a way to make this happen so I can support my family. We need our teachers and everybody else to support our kids. Like, if there's an issue where there's too many COVID cases or there's an issue with there's too much, like, we just have to have a plan to solve that. And if it has to go back to hybrid learning, that, well, we need to at least try the five days a week. It just needs to happen. And this is for, like, these are our future kids. These are the kids that are going to lead our country. Like, like, we need that. And I, I really need everybody to be, be on board with that. So I really support all of us going back to school on September 29th, five days a week. Anyway, thank everybody for, you know, everything you're doing and thanks.
Thank you so much. Our next speaker, please.
Betsy Hendrickson, you are unmuted and recognized.
My name's Betsy Hendrickson and I reside at 7 Homestead Road. I have three children. Two of my children are in the Darien Public School. One is in sixth grade at Middlesex and one is in second grade at Holmes. I am hoping that our children can go back to full-time next week. I'm grateful to the teachers who are working so hard and I know this is such a challenging. That being said, as a parent of a young child in the second grade, I am watching, I'm picking, I'm watching.
Mrs. Hendrickson, we can't hear you. Mrs. Hendrickson, I think you're muted.
She is unmuted, but it seems her audio is not working.
Okay, can we move on to the next speaker? We'll come back to Mrs. Hendrickson.
There are no more raised hands at this time.
Okay, Mrs. Hendrickson, one last chance then. I thought, I thought we could buy you some time.
There is another, Ms. Hendrickson? We have another speaker?
Okay, we will do it. We're going to take this last speaker, then we'll move on with our agenda. We also have public comment at the end. Any comment which has, someone went overtime or could not be heard can also be emailed into us. So we will take this last speaker. All other public comment will move to the end of the agenda.
Ms. Natalie Vols, you are unmuted and recognized.
Hi, my name is Natalie Vols. I live at 5 Seagate Road. I'm currently a senior at Darien High School. Well, I can definitely empathize with all the concerns expressed by elementary school parents. I ask that you please don't dismiss the importance of learning at the high school level as well. We may be more proficient than the K through five students at using technology and doing school virtually, but we also benefit and depend on the personal relationships that we form with the teachers that we've come to love. We're taking very tough classes like calculus and physics while also trying to fill out all of our college applications. The class discussions that we all rely on throughout every class at the high school have become extremely difficult during virtual and hybrid learning. So all I ask is that please don't improve the experience for the elementary school students at the expense of the high school students and the middle school students.
Thank you, Ms. Vols. Okay, we are going to move on with the agenda. There's public comment at the end of our meeting. You're also able to email the board. With that, Dr. Adley, the superintendent's report.
Yep, I will be, I will be brief. Since the last time we, we met, a number of patients have equipment, supplies have continued to come in. The remainder of the hot hand washing stations and sinks in particular have arrived. I'll give an update a wee bit later in my reopening, reopening of the school update. The Strategic Plan and Steering Committee met again and they're on the agenda for tonight to bring back some draft vision, mission and goals for discussion with the board. You'll see in the That's good. Thank you. So in the statement of accounts, there's an additional paraprofessional for the fourth grade that will be shared amongst that fourth grade. that will be shared amongst that fourth grade class at Archridge. Football and volleyball and the sports are up and running and I will give a wee update again in the reopening regarding that matter. I just want to recognize that schools will be closed virtually, literally on Monday in celebration of Yonkabur and for our families to celebrate. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move on to the approval of minutes. It's requested the board approve the following minutes. Minutes of the regular meeting held on September 8th, 2020 may have a motion to approve. Mr. Maroni Samuz, Mr. Dine Second, all in favor. That is unanimous. Minutes of the special meeting held on September 17th, 2020 may have a motion to approve. Mr. Burke and Mr. Dine, all in favor. That is also unanimous. Board committee reports. Mr. Burke?
Just very quickly, the Policy Committee met on Friday, September 18th with all members present, either physically or virtually. We went through some COVID-related policies, but due to the length of the meeting anticipated tonight, we will bring those policies forward for the full board to review at our next scheduled meeting.
Thank you. Any other board committee reports? Mrs. Ritchie?
Just the Finance Committee met yesterday. It feels like years ago, but we met yesterday. All committee members were present. We had a good discussion and we'll touch more upon it later in the report from Rich.
Great. Presentation and discussions. We have several amendments to the agenda tonight. I will go first under item 8A. Right, 8, 8A? We have another per-public request discussion item. And that is prior to the reopening of full capacity as the BOE urges the BOE to think out of the box to ensure six feet distancing utilizing auxiliary spaces and believes it is misguided in three feet social distancing effect. I will tell you, it is very rare that public asked to be on the agenda and that that consideration is given. I think at this point, what we are seeing, as much of this is falling within the reopening, but given that we have a public request, I would ask the board to vote on whether they'd like this request. We may, we may handle this all in the reopening, but I have this request from a member of the public. It takes a two-thirds vote to amend the agenda. Is there a second to the motion to add this to the agenda? I'll move. I need a second. Mrs. McCammon's, Second, all in favor. That is Richie Stein, McCammon, Maroney, Ackman, one, two, three, four. That is five. The motion carries. We will add that as a discussion item under per-public request. We will discuss with that.
It's two-thirds.
Oh, two-thirds, not majority. Sorry.
So it doesn't.
So the motion does not carry. Thank you. Appreciate that. I can't count these days. So that motion is denied. We will discuss a little bit about public requests as we get to item 8A and what that item actually is. I believe their members have suggested they have other additions to the item, possible additions. Mr. Maroney?
I would like to add to the agenda a proposed discussion and possible action of the form, in the formation of a curriculum committee.
Is there a second to that motion?
I missed, the formation of a communications committee. I need to speak clearly. I need to write clearer.
I'm sorry.
Discussion and a possible action on the formation of a communications committee.
Is there a second to that motion? Mrs. McCammon's, Second, all in favor. That is Brown, Burke, McCammon, Cini, Maroney and Dine. That motion does carry. We will add that. Item F. Are there any other motions this evening?
We'd like to discuss and possible action on the formation of a curriculum slash education delivery committee.
Is there a second to that motion? Mr. Brown, Second, all in favor. That is Brown, McCammon, Cini, Maroney and Dine. One, two, three. Do the two-thirds for me, everyone. That carries.
Can you repeat who voted on that again?
Raise your hands again. Brown, McCammon, Cini, Maroney and Dine.
That doesn't, that fails. That's only five.
Sorry, fails. I'm sorry. I'm used to majority. I appreciate.
That was five-four.
That motion fails.
Did I get that right? It was Brown, Dine?
Yeah, last time we had six on there.
I'm trying to write down the motions and.
And I'm trying to do my fractions, so. So we just have item F. Are there any other additions to the agenda this evening? None. Seeing that, we will move forward on a report, a report on the school psychologist's roles and responsibilities. Mrs. Klein?
Evening. Thank you for the opportunity on behalf of the principals to present this evening. Last month, spring of 2019, the elementary school principals had the opportunity to present to the board on the need for an additional psychologist in each of our elementary schools. Who would have imagined at that time what schools would look like the following year? This evening, the elementary principals are here to present on the impact and outcomes of having that second school psychologist in our elementary schools and what it has done to support students, teachers and families at this time. We'll begin with an overview with Paul Blakely, our principal at Holmes Elementary School this evening.
Thank you, Mrs. Klein. Good evening, everyone. I wanted to share with you just an overview of our presentation. So if we can move to the next slide, please. Thank you. We're going to start with sharing the goals of the elementary school psychologist as well as our current model of support, how we will measure success, or how we have measured success and our next steps. I'm ready for the next slide.
So are we, though? We do have the next slide up.
Okay, thank you. There's something on my computer that's not working. Okay, sorry, I got to the next slide. So our current model of support is that our psychologists are supporting children in both regular education and special education. And they are primarily responsible for three grade levels each. One psychologist will take, for example, kindergarten, second grade and fourth grade. And the other psychologist would take first grade, third grade and fifth grade. And the way the model works is that from year to year, a psychologist will follow their students through their entire elementary experience. So if they had students in kindergarten the first year, they would follow them up to first grade the next year. This allows for consistency over time and allows the psychologists to form strong relationships with both the families and the students and also to problem solve through the issues that arise. At this time, we will have Dr. Forshaw from Ox Ridge School share some of the data that we have collected going forward.
Thank you, Paula. Good evening, members of Board of Education, the public. Thank you for your attention and support of this second school psychologist. I'm also showing the screen, so I'm not sure if that's an easier way to kind of make the flow of this work. But anyway, I'm going to speak to the impact and some of the indicators that you're going to hear about throughout their presentation this evening. When we came to you in 2018, 2019 and we made the request for a second school psychologist, we tried to be very clear about what we believed the impact of that second school psychologist would have in our schools. And so tonight, we're very pleased to share with you some of the data sources that we've been able to track looking at what that impact has been. And we're going to report out to you this evening in the fashion of looking at what we said we'd be looking for in 1819, what the data sources that we now have to measure, has that impact been achieved? And to present with you both from my level, kind of the high-level discussion of those indicators and impact. And then my colleagues will get even more granular in terms of some of the data sources that we gathered and how we are making the conclusions that we're making this evening. So if you can just stick with me on the impact indicator column on the visual in front of you, you'll see that each area of impact we're listing on the left. I'll talk a little bit about the indicator that's corresponding to that area of impact on the right. And we'll try to go bit by bit. I'll have some time to go into the data sources themselves. So the first area of impact, this is one of the things we believed we'd achieve for the second school psychologist. It's really around teachers, making sure that teachers have the support they require to address a range of social, emotional needs, organizational needs, cognitive function needs of our learners. And we really wanted to make sure that we were helping teachers support social, emotional learning, certainly for our students who already had IEPs and specialized programming, but also for our more general education students. And so what we were able to do is to issue some teacher surveys in the, when, once we had the addition of the second school psychologist in play. And we were really pleased to see that we have seen strong data from classroom teachers suggesting that the addition of the second school psychologist has made an impact in terms of the proactive support for all students, that students have gotten the behavioral interventions they need in a more timely fashion. And that ultimately their consultation from the two school psychologists now on staff has improved their practice in terms of what they can deliver for all learners in the classroom. We'll get to more granular detail in a minute on that. We wanted to make sure that the access to the second school psychologist was just increased. That was another one of the impact areas. If you recall for, for the 1819 school year, we talked about that the one school psychologist, as heroic as their job was, was largely spent in meetings in a regulatory environment, looking at, you know, evaluations of students, looking at PPT meetings, team meetings, very important work. But we'd love to see general education teachers, families and other colleagues have more access to those school psychologists. And we borne that out, that that school psychologists now have been able to work with more variety of stakeholders. We have the teacher survey we pointed to and we've also asked school psychologists themselves to reflect on how they've been able to allocate their time, thinking back to when there was just one of them to now when there are two of them. And we'll show you some of the positives along that line. We were hoping that the addition of the school psychologists would have a really strong impact on our overall school culture and climate, particularly looking at discipline referrals, behavioral referrals, meaning behavior intervention for more acute issues. And we've been able to see that we've got a strong reduction in the number of disciplinary referrals to the office, meaning that students who are simply needing some support in terms of how to regulate their emotional state, how to solve conflicts with peers, how to navigate the demands of a busy elementary school, were not simply just sort of like sent to our office as a disciplinary matter. And we've had good data support that we've seen a reduction of those disciplinary referrals alongside an increase of students getting more proactive support and consultation to their teachers around how to support them, how to make sure that they have the tools they need to navigate their day effectively. Not to say that we have no disciplinary referrals, but that we've seen the number decrease quite significantly and we do that as a positive trend. And we certainly do attribute that decrease to the addition of second school psychologists. We also have just our general observation of students and our conversations with our colleagues in the building around students being able to meet our school expectations in non-structured environments, meaning recess and lunch and transition time. And we've got kids who are more able to navigate the demands of the school, to negotiate with their friends, to be able to regulate themselves emotionally and to be able to kind of organize their day, attributing to the second school psychologist being able to do more support to the classroom teacher, to work with small-grader students, to work with individual students where they need to in the general education setting. So those observations are powerful. And the final piece that we said we'd look at and we were hoping that there'd be an impact and we're pleased to share tonight that we do see that impact is the impact of overall kind of systems and school programming. And with the addition of the second school psychologist, we now have more robust social, emotional learning lessons that are being taught in classrooms, sometimes taught by the school psychologists themselves in general education classrooms, sometimes taught by classroom teachers that have been written collaboratively with our school psychologists and our whole behavior team. We have classroom libraries that are now in place that have been curated and analyzed by our school psychologists to support our social, emotional learning goals. And we're well on our way in our development of our SRBI, scientifically research-based intervention model for behavior, which has been really championed by our school psychologists and really vetted by them as a collaborative membership. We also, you might have heard another Board of Education meetings that we've been pursuing dialectical behavior therapy with our school psychologists and that approach is a school-wide approach. Those, those counselors are the most skilled in delivering DBT to individual students, but they're coaching all of us into how to make our schools more supportive and holistic in responding to the emotional needs of our, of our young learners. And finally, we've been able to see that school psychologist presence has really supported confidence in teachers engaging with their whole class learners. You're going to hear of just school psychologists who have been able to get into classrooms more frequently to support classroom instruction when it's been tricky, to help navigate classroom management issues. So we've definitely seen a nice impact on our whole school environment. My colleague in a moment, Dr. Mullen, will talk a little bit about the actual metrics. I know that we're all kind of data hounds here and so we'll dive into those metrics in a moment. But just to again summarize some of the high-level features of what we've been able to evaluate thus far, teachers have reported more real-time access to professionals with specific content knowledge. That is a huge improvement from where we were in 1819, where teachers were reporting to us and we were experiencing them feeling like they did not have the ear of the mental health professionals that they needed. And we've just seen increase in access. We have teachers who are reporting that they feel more supported in the classroom, both with students with behavioral challenges and needs and then in their own development of their ability to, you know, apply, understand and apply universal strategies. What are the best ways to support, for example, how do you organize students and use visuals? How do you help young people understand how to negotiate, you know, conflict on the playground? They feel stronger about having those strategies themselves. Their tool to be able to adapt and change for different variety of students, their toolkit for supporting students from a social, emotional standpoint has gotten wider and more accessible. And that just ultimately, we're looking at the, the school psychologist's time kind of autopsy themselves and what they've been able to demonstrate is that they have increased allocation of time for not simply evaluations and meetings, but for counseling, for group work, for supporting classroom teachers, for implementing DBT. And you're going to see that detail right now. And I'm going, at this point, I'm going to turn it over to my colleague, Dr. Garen Mullen, the principal of Royal Elementary School, who'll do a deep dive into some of that data.
Thank you so much, Dr. Forshaw. Hi, everyone. Thank you so much for having us tonight. I'm very excited to report out on some of that more granular information that Dr. Forshaw said that we had. And for any of those that know me well, I'm very excited about data anyway. So this is just, you know, an added bonus that it's very good data. As, as Dr. Forshaw said, we were able to administer a teacher survey to look at some of this information and really get some more granular information around how our teachers were feeling related to the addition of the second school psychologist. Just as a note for this, this teach, this teacher survey was administered right before school closure. We had about, we had 78 teachers respond to the survey. So about 80 teachers responded to the survey. I do believe, my hypothesis would be that we would have had a larger survey response had we not gone out for school closure, but nevertheless, in this survey, the first question was basically a Likert scale, asking teachers to report on whether or not they saw an increase in the support and availability with the second school psychologist. And the scale ranging from minimal to significantly increased in terms of support and availability. As you can see from this graph here, the large majority of our teachers reported a significant increase in the support and availability with a second school psychologist. Just from a database, this is about 90% of the teachers reported somewhat to significantly increased support and availability with the second school psychologist added to the elementary schools. The second question that we asked our teachers was about the greatest areas of impact. And you'll see that in this next chart. We asked teachers, what were the greatest areas that they saw the impact in with the addition of the second school psychologist? So we, we asked them to report on these different areas. Proactive supports for students, access to consultation for teachers, crisis intervention support, professional development access, positive impact on school climate, planning and co-teaching of social and emotional lessons, support for working with families and the development of behavioral strategies in the classroom. As you can see from this chart, teachers ranked their greatest, the three greatest areas of impact they saw with the addition of the second school psychologist. And by and large, we saw that in four major areas, all of which have to do with working with students. So we saw that this access to consultation for teachers, which as Dr. Forshaw reported on, increased our teacher capacity for feeling supported in learning, understanding and being able to implement those universal strategies for students. The development of behavioral strategies to implement in the classroom was another area that teachers reported impact in, as well as help with additional crisis intervention. And of course, the greatest area that we saw, proactive supports for students. which is what we always want to be doing, is proactive instead of reactive. The third table that we put together for you is an actual time allocation from a school psychologist when, in the difference between having one school psychologist to two school psychologists. We did pull this data from all of our school psychologists across the five elementary schools. But for your knowledge, this is actually one school psychologist at Royal. So it's actual numbers and data from one particular school psychologist in their time allocation from when they were the only school psychologist to when there were two. And again, very pleased to report that we saw an incredible change in terms of their amount of time with kids. As you can see, the blue on this screen reflects their time allocation with one school psychologist. That first area is in evaluations. So you can see the drop in the amount of time they were spending doing evaluations from one to two school psychologists. The second area, teacher consultation and training, that went up with two school psychologists, which is exactly what we were hoping for. This is perhaps, I think, the biggest game that we got, which was the huge discussion that we had related to the addition of the school psychologists with the amount of meetings that our school psychologists were in. As you can see, this decreased the amount of meetings from forty percent of their time down to twenty percent of their time. An additional category was added for DBT implementation. This, of course, wasn't part of a school psychologist's day two years ago, but certainly last year with our year one of rollout became a large part of both of the time allocations for the school psychologists. The next area you see indicated is general education SEL. That's our school psychologist ability to get into classrooms, get into morning meetings and do SEL lessons. This has dramatically increased to about ten percent of their time with the addition of the school psychologist. And the next part, and this is probably what I'm most excited to report on, this is the amount of time that our school psychologists are spending with kids. So we've noted this as individual and small group counseling. This is both for students that have this as required parts of their individual plans, whether it's an IEP or a five oh four plan, or perhaps through SRBI behavior, or it's general education students that need some support on an ongoing basis or on a one-off. This is time spent with kids individually or in small groups doing their work. Thirty percent of their time is spent doing this, and that is absolutely fantastic. The next two areas, parent consultation and training, we're very excited to see that go up as well. We're always wanting our staff to be able to support our parent community and whatever they need in working with our children and their children. And certainly that last area, crisis intervention and response. You can see the dramatic difference between one school psychologist to two. And this isn't just because there's another body in the building. This is because we're able to implement those proactive supports and really reduce this amount of time that we're spending in reactive crisis intervention. At this point, I'm going to turn it over to my colleague Julie Droller. She's going to talk about some of the additional unanticipated positive outcomes of having that additional school psychologist. And then we're going to get into some real quotes that we got from parents based on the impact of that school psychologist.
Thank you, Dr. Mullen. So some of the additional and unanticipated positive outcomes. First of all, our model is designed, is, is aligned to best practices as outlined by the National Association of School Psychologists and practice domains for school psychologists. Our psychologists provided supports for students and families during school closure. They hosted Zoom presentations on topics based on parent feedback. They provided consultation for parents, they shared strategies, they recommended specific ways to talk with students, they give them language to talk with students, and they made themselves available to parents when needed. And, and parents took advantage and benefited from that. They maintained social skills groups during school closure with students. And again, like Dr. Mullen said, students on their caseload through special education and SRBI as well as just students who were struggling or anxious living through a pandemic at home. They include weekly advice for families in our PTA newsletters. They develop mindfulness and wellness activities during school closure that are continuing into the school year. Breathing techniques, journaling, yoga. They continued participation in morning meetings and co-planning of social emotional lessons. And when, when we first introduced the second school psychologists and they spent more time in the classroom, it took a little navigation, you know, teachers weren't always comfortable giving up the reins to the school psychologists. But now they're an integral part of morning meeting and that social emotional learning, they're welcomed in the classroom. It's a very natural co-teaching kind of activity and time of day. So some of the parent comments that we want to share, and my colleague Mary Michelson and I will share those with you. My child was struggling. I reached out to the psychologist who then observed my son and pulled him to have a chat about what he was struggling with. He felt very comfortable talking to her because he was familiar with her as she had come into his class to teach many lessons. He was thankful to know that anytime he needed to talk, he could reach out to her. And he did a few times over the year. And that really speaks to having an adult for all students to connect with at school. So Mrs. Michelson, I'm going to turn this over to you now.
Next slide. Thank you. Thank you, Julie. And thank you to everybody for coming to hear our presentation tonight. We were so pleased. It was such a nice big crowd. So thank you. So we, um, we really reached out to a lot of parents because we wanted to know really truly if, if, if they felt the same way that we could see what was happening in the building and for our children. And we did receive many different quotes. One parent said, last year when we hosted our Meet the New Psychologist coffee, several parents attended and asked questions about child development, helping children navigate peer conflict, etc. So they didn't just come to hear about what the school psychologist does, but they actually asked for tips and information. Another parent added that as a parent, I immediately noticed the energy in the staff with the addition of the second school psychologist. They seemed more relaxed, knowing that support was easier to ask for and receive with the additional psychologist. And this is so important because I feel, we all believe that this is how the staff feels too, that there's that extra support if I've got a question about somebody who's having a problem trying to come into school, that there is that extra person in the building and there's always somebody available. Our next slide. Anybody moving the next slide? Thank you. I've always felt inadequate when it comes to communicating with my child. And I love this quote because this is so true. So many times we, we know what to say, but we can't think of the right words. And so this parent brought it out by, my school psychologist was able to speak to me on, on a brief phone call and give me the language to use that helped us work together when he was struggling. And it's things parents know what to do, but sometimes just having that little bit of reminder or a nice suggestion that really does help and makes the parent feel so much better. And finally, thank goodness, we had a second school psychologist when the school closures happened. So helpful to know that there was a resource to support my child and me. And as several of my colleagues mentioned before, our school psychologists were so useful and helpful during our shutdown from the middle of March on to the end of the year. Weekly newsletters, they had, many of them had open houses or times to drop in to talk to them, and their phone was always there. They could always talk to them. And believe me, they had a lot of calls. So now, next steps. Thank you. So our next steps, what now? So we ended the year kind of briskly last year, and we had to complete our year really using our school psychologist in helping all different ways. And now this year, as you all noticed, we've started the year in a non-traditional way too. So what can we do this year for our next steps? So we are continuing our dialectical behavior therapy or DBT with using the company, the CBT C company. They, every other week we have, or the consultants, every other week they meet with the school administrators as well as the elementary school, school psychologists. So every other week we can talk about this and how can we bring this into our schools? So we've been adding this into the schools, and even though the meetings are virtual, they're very successful and helpful. We are continuing our partnership with the responsive classroom. So our classroom teachers are all trained and our school psychologists are all trained in level one of responsive classrooms. So the language is the same across the, the school. And when the school psychologists can go into the classrooms to meet with the classes, they know what's going on with the responsive classroom theory and work. We also are continuing to work with our, our, the collaborative problem solving group with Ross Green. We have done book studies, several of our schools have done book studies of Ross Green and behavior. And also there have been many different workshops offered that staff have taken advantage of. And Mark Brackett and the social emotional learning, that's another avenue to look at too, which we've beginning our study in many of the schools. The professional development for the staff has been invaluable. We've had our school psychologists come and work with our faculty meetings to talk about Ross Green or Mark Brackett or the DBT. So we've been working with different avenues. We'll talk to the school psychologists and they will attend our faculty meetings to work with us. And then finally, they continue the workshops with staff and parents. So we're reaching out to parents always at the beginning of the year to say, come on in. I know my school has a new school psychologist and we have a coffee this week. We want you to come in and meet her. And also when there are topics such as the pandemic, how is my child working with worry? They'll have small workshops for that and invite different people to that. So at this time, I just want to thank you all for attending our presentation, and we want to know if there are any questions.
Thank you for the comments and questions. I just want to pick up where you left off before we move on. When we put these school psychologists in, we saw the need, but we never anticipated the pandemic. So in this case, timing is everything. Can you talk a little bit? I hear in parent comments, a lot of questions, and I, and I'm using their words, certainly not making any clinical diagnoses, but stress, anxiety, depression. Can you talk a little bit about what our psychologists are seeing as school opens? And how they're being utilized?
So as schools open, they, they have been a huge resource. And, and I honestly don't know how we could have, all of us will agree. We don't know how we could have done it without having to. The resource of answering the phone, talking to parents, attending our kindergarten orientations, explaining where they are, the phone numbers. So they take a lot of phone calls or Zoom meetings. They've actually had Zoom meetings. And they also reach out to those children, which are the most important. So if a classroom teacher will see that a child needs some talking, you know, somebody to come talk to. Or we've also had the child that didn't want to get out of the car. So that's where you have that extra person in there, or both people are busy all the time, really working with that. And we really want parents to reach out to us to say, my child's having issues. Can you come and talk to me?
Thank you. I'm sorry. Go ahead, Mrs. Droller.
I just wanted to add on to say that in the morning, I've seen such a significant difference this year because both of our psychologists are out at arrival, greeting car, greeting students when they get out of cars. And proactively, when a student is just starting to turn to face mom or dad, they go over. They know exactly what to say and how to get them into the building before there are even any tears.
Thank you. Mr. Burke?
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. It was very informative. Our chair thought of one of my two questions. So my second question is, do you have enough resources present?
I can speak to that. Thank you. You know, I, I will say as the, as the youngest and, and least veteran member of the elementary school principal staff, I came in at quite an opportune time because I came in with two school psychologists. So I didn't experience what many of my colleagues did in terms of starting with one school psychologist and, and then seeing that dramatic impact. So in some ways, I, I only know the present and, and I can say that, you know, while I could always ask for more. You know, right now, I think where our work is, is geared towards is, you know, we've been working closely with, with Chris Tranberg and with the committee, looking at SRBI behavior, looking to hone our practices there. And, and looking at exploring some of this work with Ross Green and Mark Brackett and some of these other organizations that have some programs and information out there just to bolster and, and make our programs related to social emotional learning more robust. I think in terms of the clinical support, you know, right now, we're seeing kids in, in a different way than we ever have, right? We're living in different times than we ever have. And so some pieces of that is going to see how our children respond to the, you know, the changing nature of school and being as flexible and nimble as we can be with our proactive supports and our responses to that. I think my colleagues would agree with me in terms of the fact that we feel well supported by the two school psychologists and that we are excited to move forward with some of the work that we have already moving as we continue to roll out DBT, as we continue our partnership with RC, as we continue to really hone our work in SRBI behavior. And then I think once we have those practices a little further down the path, you know, who knows, we might be back.
We'll be here. Thank you.
Mr. Maroney?
Yes, thank you for the presentation, and I agree with the data. I agree that it's super interesting. As Mrs. Ackman said, you know, we didn't have the foresight to know this was coming, but I'm so happy that we, we put the five, the four psychologists in and to do this because I don't know what we would have done without. And I know there are a lot of people that want to get on with the meeting and discuss some of our other matters, but I think it's really important to discuss these. And I, I kind of want to build on what Mr. Burke was talking about is, is can, do we need to do anything as a board to help support even more of the, this collaboration with the two, Dr. Green and Dr. Brackett? And what, what can we do with that? And as well, the follow, a, a second point as well is, and I realize that the pandemic and the shutdown probably impacted this, but I would love to see some survey data of, of parents and families on how well their, the psychologists are working for them and how they notice the difference as well.
Thank you. Not to, and not to steal the thunder of a I think another group that's going to present this evening, but having right ahead to the steering committee's work, I think you're going to see that there's some thoughts around how we're developing whole learners and taking care of the, the whole child. I know there's been a mission of the board and of this system for a long time, but I think that that's probably a next healthy step for all of us to continue down. I, I think Gareem is spot on that we need to more cohesively develop all the systems that are kind of underway right now, SRBI behavior and what we're doing with these partnerships. But I think all that still has to nest inside of the vision of who are the young people that we're helping develop? What is the vision for how we as a educational community and in partnership with families? What's the trajectory for that? And what do we want these young people to, you know, have in terms of skills and what their development become? So I think that, that, you know, the next segment around the vision of the graduate and the steering committee work, I think dovetails nicely.
I'll just add on to Dr. Forshaw by, by just saying thank you to the Board of Ed for this, you know, incredible support for our schools. I'm a mental health professional, a school counselor by trade. And so this is, you know, obviously near and dear to my heart in particular, and making sure that students are supported in the best way possible by clinical professionals. And I, I know that my colleagues, you know, join me in just thanking you for supporting this and, and hearing us tonight.
Mrs. McCannan? Thank you. I, I'd like to compliment the, the principal team. When we talked last year about, or when we talked about, whenever it was, the psychologists and, and Chris. We asked you guys to think about how you were going to use them, to think about impact, to think about measuring it, and to come back with us and talk to us about what it really looked like in the schools. And so it's very easy to see from this presentation what you're doing and why and how you thought about it. And it's something that we can easily all get excited about. So I just wanted to compliment you and say thank you for listening. This is exciting.
So I'd like to follow up to, we talked a little bit about when we put these school psychologists in, ensuring that the whole school had access, right? We, we, the board really understood kind of the maybe traditional use of a school psychologist. And you touched on it in some of your data points. But just as an overview, can you, do you all feel that these psychologists are being warranted and used throughout the school community?
Absolutely.
Absolutely. Yeah.
Yeah.
I think one of the, the things that has happened that could never happen before is that
I think um, one of the the things that has happened that could never happen before is that our psychologists have been able to push into the general ed classrooms and spend time proactively teaching strategies to the whole class and helping to build community with the whole class. So every single child at their grade level, which ends up being the whole school with two psychologists, is getting that benefit. So that did not exist before because there just wasn't the ability for one person to do that. So it's a huge impact.
Thank you. Any other board question? Oh, Mrs. Ritchie.
Sorry, it's it's more of a just a thank you. Um, I I agree with Mrs. McCammon that I, the data is amazing to look at and it it's very interesting that it have, it's coming to us before COVID actually hit. So I I'm not going to ask for another survey, but I would be intrigued to see what it would be like during COVID. And since the sample size was only eighty teachers, it would be also interesting to see if we could get higher participation level at some point. But thank you so much for the report.
Great. Any other board comments or questions? Mr. Maroney?
Just one last one. I think it's, um, you know, I think Mrs. McCammon used the word exciting. I think that's a great word for this. And I think it's really encouraging and and I think I really look forward to seeing future presentations of this and seeing now that the crisis management piece has gone down, that we're able to have more one-on-one impact with students and families that we should be able to see a lot more mental health growth and social emotional growth, um, which is really important. So thank you.
If I may, just from a distance, for superintendent's gone before me, um, this is a smart place, intelligent place. And the for the board and the superintendent informed me this was a tremendously smart decision. Uh, you can see it on the ground and how helpful it is to to our students and our undergrads.
Okay. Thank you all. Thank you for hanging in there with us tonight and thank you for this update. Um, and and thank, please thank our school psychologists who are doing the work on the ground on behalf of the Board of Education. Thank you.
We will. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
We'll move forward to the update on Strategic Planning Committee. Dr. Adring.
Uh, Dr. Levens, you should be out there in safer space somewhere. Uh, thank you for your patience. I am going to, uh, since I know you well, I'll ask you and like 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 this. Given the the length of our agenda, I'm going to ask you for to be as brief as you can. So we're not probably, if I may say, a totally reflective mode to uh, take time or reflect the time, but if you can just frame as a as an update, I think the board certainly would appreciate that. And we can recycle back again, reschedule all the time. So thank you.
Understood. Thank you for having me this evening. It's an honor to be with you. As always, as you know, we have been leading a strategic planning process on behalf and with some board participation. That process began in earnest back in January. It took a brief pause during the shutdown and then we picked back up and regained steam. And we're at the point, uh, we're at a significant turning point, a little bit of a milestone in the process. So I'm coming to you today if we can, I I can't see the, the screen's not coming up for me. So if we're on slide, the outcomes of the board briefing, basically just want to provide you an overall, thank, perfect, uh, wanted to provide uh, an overview of the, I'm going to pin that really quickly. Uh, an update of the process overall, where we've been, where we're going. Give you a sense of what the steering committee has come up with thus far, again, following the superintendent's lead. Just a briefing around those and and we'll come back around to get some input on those at a later time. And I think we'll just bypass the fourth bullet here, but we'll we'll we're not losing that. We're just going to pick it up at a later time. A next slide, please. I just want to begin with a huge thank you to the amazing individuals that the board had the vision to put on this steering committee. We have a collection of students, parents, teachers, administrators, administrators at multiple levels. We have uh, community members, we have stakeholders who wear multiple hats. And from the very beginning, they joined into this enterprise, rolled up their sleeves, committed to collaboration and committed to asking hard questions of each other and of the district. It's been an absolute honor to work with them over the last several months. And I'll say the the names listed here are the ones who've been doing the heavy intellectual lifting. I've, as a representative of the Connecticut Center for School Change, in many ways have just been a steward of the process and and they've done the really hard work. Names here are listed alphabetically. Uh, I know that the superintendent's probably hates that his last name starts with an A because it looks like he's getting more uh, early attention in this. And I promise I'm the one who put these together and wanted to put them in alphabetical order. Uh, if I if I
I pass it all together and I'd be just fine.
If we, if there's any name that has been omitted is entirely my error and my apologies to that person, if that's happened, but hopefully we've captured everyone. Uh, next slide, please. So this is another visual to represent the roadmap that we've been on and where we are currently. We started back in December of two thousand nineteen, talking about what the strategic planning process could entail. Uh, I came to you to ask, what did you really want out of this process? You asked me questions about how would, how do we at the center guide these processes? We then, uh, you helped designate into a representative group of people who would serve on the steering committee. And then we've been heavy at work since beginning in earnest, which was mid-January, working to identify the district's needs, develop and create some recommendations that would come back to the board. A reminder, the the steering committee realizes it's not a decision making group. It knows that it's coming. It's trying to develop recommendations to bring back to the board. And along that way, we spent a lot of time kind of assembling, chartering the team, creating the norms. We did a pretty exhaustive needs assessment and we've been working to articulate some broad goal areas and some measures and metrics that will allow the district to monitor progress against those as well as to um, continue a continuous learning process overall. You'll notice that the line kind of snakes back around underneath and to the left and there's a red star because that's where we are. The steering committee has has reached agreement on some recommendations of some broad goal, goal areas and some more specific kind of goals within those. And uh, shortly, we're going to be asking kind of experts within the district to look at those and answer the question, how do we get? How do we pursue those? What is the leading expertise and research on that? So we're going to ask professional educators to identify the strategic work in order to pursue those goals. And then ultimately, all of this work comes back to you, the board, where you're not just being asked to uh, accept it as is, that you'll be engaged in a process of reviewing carefully, looking at the feedback that has come from the steering committee and then will also include recommendations from professional educators. And ultimately, through your own process, reach some agreement and adopt a strategic plan that can help the superintendent and his team drive an improvement process over multiple years. Next, uh, actually, we can exit the PowerPoint and bring up the Google document that has the draft plan as is.
I'm not so sure we have that. I'm not so sure we have that there, Richard.
I think that we had, uh, I thought I got a communication saying that it was queued up and ready to go, but I can share my screen if that works on your end.
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. Pardon for the So as I said, the the steering committee has been working tirelessly over the last several months in a variety of conversations with a variety of tasks to ultimately pull together solid recommendations. I've, on behalf of the steering committee, have begun to assemble all of their, all of their work to date so that you can begin to see how, what it might look like ultimately when you imagine the graphics, the art. And of course, what's most important is the substance of this. So what you see are just uh, this would be somewhat of a title page, just a recommendation, um, just an articulation that this is a multi-year plan. Uh, typically, in a strategic, in a multi-year strategic plan, you'd have a letter from the board or the board chair describing the process and how excited you are to adopt this plan. There would be some letter by the superintendent. Again, that can be plugged in later. That's pretty easy work. We have a a list of all the amazing people again who worked on this. And then we'll have, we'll develop a graphic for you that just shows the process that you use because you want people who receive this plan ultimately to have some transparency around, well, who worked on this? How did they come up with these ideas and how is it moving forward? Uh, and then we have docu, we have versions of the mission, vision and core values that we've come to you with in the past. We have a mission statement, inspiring the love of learning, developing critical thinkers, problem solvers, innovative creators who are compassionate and contributing citizens. I know we're moving fast. If anyone needs me to slow down, please let me know. We have a vision statement, preparing all students today to thrive in a changing world tomorrow. And we have an articulation of a variety of core values that the steering committee and the board thought important for articulating kind of the cultural expectations of the organization. And those revolve around wellness, integrity, excellence, equity, innovation, collaboration, diversity and inclusion and respect and civility. Careful attention was given to defining each of these terms. We expect that you might review these again and uh, and and take careful look at them, but there was quite a bit of energy taken to take the ideas of the board and the ideas of the steering committee and weave them together in a, in a powerful articulation of what these ideas mean. As you know, there is another committee working actively within the district to create a portrait of the graduate and articulation of the core competencies, disposition, skills that your graduating seniors will possess when they walk across the stage and receive that Darien diploma. We have been working in conjunction, though it's a parallel process, that we have been briefed regularly and reoccurring way to understand what's happening in that committee. And uh, by all accounts, the the work that we've been doing in the steering committee lines up in spirit with the work of the portrait of the graduates. We imagine that the portrait of the graduate should be a key artifact in this ultimate plan. That then takes us to the the goal areas and uh, some of the sub-goals within those. I'm going to move through these really quickly. I think I can do it in five or six minutes. I know that the the text is rather small. My apologies for that, but what I want you to take away from this is not a word-for-word retention of each of these goals. And I, and I also want you to recognize that what you will, you will have an opportunity as a board to wrestle with these and think through these and and add your best thinking to these. So the first broad goal area was in the area of enhancing teaching and learning to, basically to build on the good things that are already going on uh, in in Darien public schools, but in some specific ways. Goal one A, develop a shared vision of teaching and learning, including clear definitions of key principles tied to the portrait of the graduate and aligned to the mission, vision and core values of the district. Goal one B, revise and or create curricula that are responsive, that responsibly represent diverse perspectives and designed to meet individual learning needs. Goal one C, develop professional development system that provides job embedded learning opportunities aligned with the mission, vision, portrait of the graduate core values. Again, all of those related to how do we take steps forward and build on the assets of the district in relationship to teaching and learning. Goal area two focuses on culture and specifically a culture that promotes wellness, diversity and inclusion. So goal two A, create a caring school climate that promotes the value of wellness and is aligned to the mission, vision, core values and portrait of the graduate. Goal two B, engage stakeholders in the practice of embracing diversity and inclusion. And that takes us to goal area three, developing a balanced definition of success in the Darien public schools. Goal three A, create a system through which district-wide values are meaningfully operationalized and contextualized at the school level. Goal three B, develop a data collection system that can help measure, inform, enhance student preparedness and satisfaction post-graduation. And goal three C, audit and adjust district curriculum, student or school programming, student life to ensure focus on service, citizenship and post-secondary opportunities. I think what you'll see there is a real want to have a solid balance in the lives of students and and in the coaching towards what happens after high school. Goal area four, expanding the professional capacity of staff. For A is create and continue to develop a professional culture that values and supports Darien educators. For B, develop a professional learning system that promotes continuous learning or continuous growth and support. And for C, attract and retain diverse educators. And for D, create a comprehensive onboarding system that supports new hires. Goal area five focuses on enhancing, developing and enhancing systems that will promote efficiency, coherence and communication. Goal five A, establish effective and open lines of communication among all stakeholders of Darien public schools. Streamline district handbooks and envision in, um, and ensure alignment with vision, mission, core values and to foster coherence across the district. And five C, audit existing policies and procedures and adjust in alignment with vision, mission, core values of the district. Two goal areas left, goal area six, improving district facilities for student safety and access to learning. This basically boiled down to one broad goal, ensure configuration and condition of our physical facilities to provide secure and supportive environments for teaching and learning. And then goal area seven squarely lands on technology, improving the tech, technology infrastructure to support the strategic aims of the district. The steering committee wants to weave technology through all of the goal areas that have been mentioned previously, but also felt that technology was worth calling out as a separate goal area. So goal seven A, ensure strategic, strategic utilization of technology to enrich, support and inspire teaching and learning. Seven B, maintain appropriate techno, technology systems for effective and efficient district operations. So the, the other thing I will draw your attention to, and I'll just use goal area seven as an example of this, but it holds for the other goal areas. The far right column of this table includes the kinds of measures and metrics that the steering committee believes that the administration of the district should pay attention to, should track, should document and should also uh, uh, and that the board should be asking questions regarding that gives us a way of monitoring implementation and impact. The two columns that are are at, in this version, clear are around the strategic work and timeline. And by strategic work, I mean if we're going to ensure utilization of technology to enrich, support and inspire teaching and learning, as it says in goal seven A, what actually has to happen and what has to happen this year and what needs to happen in the second year and what needs to happen in the third year? Just for example, maybe there needs to be an audit of existing technology resources and their use in the system. Does that happen in the academic year twenty twenty one? And then what happens in year twenty one, twenty two? That is work we're asking the professional educators in the system to help us think through using the goal area that the, the goal areas that this, the steering committee has come up with. And the, but uh, to that point, the steering committee hasn't been silent on some of these issues. They have provided a lot of documented recommendations and advice for the professional educators to consider in the strategic work column. So there's another version of this. It just has a whole lot of words and notes and and recommendations to consider. And that's just there as fodder as the the um, next group takes the reins on this. And then ultimately, uh, from my vantage point, the Connecticut Center for School Change, I think you'd be well served to end your ultimate document. However, it ultimately looks with a clear articulation of how you're planning to use the the strategic plan itself. Many districts spend quite a bit of energy and resources in the development of a plan and are less sure how the plan will get deployed later on. And it's almost treated as a given that it will be used and it will be used wide wisely and that there will be some kind of recursive system that brings the strategic plan to life. My experience is that quite a few districts fall short in that area. So some articulation of how it will be used to drive school department planning, how it will shape board goals. So some articulation of how it will be used to drive school department planning, how it will shape board goals. How you'll create accountability within the system around these target areas and how you'll promote continuous improvement. And I imagine that the superintendent has a lot of thinking and is quite a few years of experience around how to use strategic plans to drive work. And a lot of his ideas will come out here as well as the ideas of the board of education. So with that, I will, I'm all come out of share and see if the board has any questions for me.
Uh, great. Thank you so much. What I will say is this is so dense of the material. I think it will probably need a separate board work session. So I appreciate the overview, but I think we should all plan that we probably will need a work session on this as it's the guiding. Document for the next five, seven years. With that, are there any questions for tonight for Dr. Lemmons? Other than a thank you to the committee, a thank you, I think that tonight we will hold, as we know, we are looking at reopening school in just a few days. And strategic planning is not, is not, not out of our minds, but I think we should probably schedule something discreet for it. So thank you for the committee. Thank you for letting us know what to expect and we are excited to dive into that work.
Sorry, just one quick thing. Do we have a, a, I know you had the flow chart, but it didn't have a date. Do we have a, a timeline as to when to expect the finished product or any, I mean, is it just a general timeline?
I think that's now up to us. We had a timeline.
It, it's actually articulated some dates in the, one of the master agenda item here.
We, on the master agenda, we are scheduled to revisit again in October. I think at this point we may have worked, so there may be an additional, additional time we need to, but.
I think we have two, we have two dates scheduled.
Any other questions for tonight? All right. Thank you, Dr. Lemon.
Thanks for hanging in there, Dr. Lemmons. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, we will move on to the update on the reopening of schools, Dr. Adler.
So for all those still watching, thank you for hanging in. And for all the diverse perspectives, while I guard your staff particularly, our teachers and staff for. Doing an extraordinary job of the first thirteen days of school for our parents who hung in there with us. And for the collaborative effort of everyone to get the schools reopened as we did. Just, just about thirteen days ago. So for, for the purpose of this update, this is the several. Versions of the update that I've done. I'm not going over every single slide that I did before. I'm just doing some of the highlights again that came up from the last discussion, if you don't mind. And certainly I would engage with the board. Uh, so some issues around technology, we practically had some of these questions, I know were, were some board questions, so I just built them in. I'll try not to read it completely, but there's about a hundred spare devices. Uh, some of them are still in, in states of needing repair themselves. And actually we probably have more than a hundred, but in any, any given time, a good estimate of actually working spurs, spares would be about a hundred. Uh, the, the feedback since the last, you, you can sort of triangulate the data you hear from parents with this and so on and so forth. But uh, the response back from the technology department that will be very brutally honest with us. Was the device failure was greater than expected, but, but is getting manageable. Uh, remote users are connecting with much fewer issues. We did have a couple of incidents of pop-ups of inappropriate material, inappropriate advertising. That has been addressed and corrected. The health test is about four times the normal rate and through, through the school year. So we right now have anywhere in any given day, two hundred to three hundred tickets that are being processed. Again, that's about four times the normal rate. Infrastructure from, from feedback from the department is, is performing well. We will need additional staff. So we are going to kick the board up in the offer. Well, you can sort of share with me what that process should be. But we're, we've been looking for probably two staff to join the elementary. Buildings to provide ongoing support at that level. Because if we go to remote, we're, you know, we're going to have the same. The hybrid has helped us prepare for the remote, but when we go to the remote, we're going to be dealing with the same number of computers and so on and so forth. Yes, support staff, yep. And the new attendance procedures have been put in place that were required by the state department of education. And that the technology department is, has assisted with that. There are some new procedures that they're doing at the school level. Some of them range from taking attendance every day. We have to, to account for remote learners and so on and so forth. And our candidates, so that's a, that's just an overview of the technology. I'll go through the rest of it and then you can maybe just come back to any particular topic. So one of the big topics is really, we have been really trying to respond to our staff. And our parents, right? And the board and just in general that the, this idea of trying to get six feet distance at lunch. Administration has been working hard at that. We're sort of the final stages of that and we feel we'll be able to do that. Now for some, in some cases, one thing compromises another. Uh, but it seems that, that this, this idea of distancing, particularly during, during the times when they're eating is, is important. Uh, so we've been able to do that. But how have we done that? Primary about revisiting what take place in some of these larger spaces. So there'll be variations of this from each school, primarily around the use of gyms and cafeteria spaces. There will be variations from each school that will go out on Thursday, what that looks like. But we're pleased to be able to actually address this, this difficult issue. Several members were quarantined this week at Togonik and normally we don't sort of talk about a probable issue. But given when we discussed this with a medical advisor and a director of public health, there's other issues that they take into consideration, including the symptoms, so on and so forth. So we're pleased that that resolved. If case, and we will continue to communicate very openly and transparently about cases. Think the exclusion of contact tracing links were updated to be more explicit. And again, I just left this because we do appreciate not only the communication from the parents, but also the proactiveness in keeping their children home. If they have symptoms of, of being sick and so on. This week, the additional hand sanitizer stations arrived. So there was one that I heard in a, in a portable. So I hope that gets to the portable. In essence, we were having hand sanitizers in any stations, in any classrooms that didn't have. Did not, I'm sorry, any classrooms that were lunches being eaten and, and didn't have a sink. That, that's where they were placed. So they're, they've arrived, as have the portable wash stations. Uh, the microfiber closer do this week. We distributed additional wipes by the box loads. The labels for the sanitizer spray bottles come in. Some people, this may make more sense to you than others. Uh, the hiring of additional custodial staffs that we, we are looking for custodial staff at this point where that's active underway. This is a new addition even since we spoke the last time. Uh, we are going to go ahead and purchase destials. Uh, that's about ten to twenty-one days out. What does that look like? It looks like a, a three-way sort of enclosure. It's sturdy enough and it's thick plastic. And so it will also help with the three feet. And the sense of particularly with, with the droplets, right? That, that's a big concern, more concern probably than other things. And also it's another mitigation strategy to be responsive to the staff, to, to keep them safe and the students safe. Uh, it will help with snacks, because snacks generally aren't eaten outside of the classroom and appreciate the fact that. Uh, the staff up and so facilitating that. So this will be ordered for up and down the system. And we can get that in ten to twenty-one days. So that will add another strong mitigation factor. And that was something that was requested. Additional plexiglass, all the teachers have plexiglass, but they're nice. Being considered, there's requests for, what can I have it right round? Um, if I have an assessment of a student, I'd like to be able to sit beside him or her. Can I have it for that? So we're going to go ahead and do that. So those are requests that are coming through our teachers and our staff. And I think we should do that. We have an opportunity to do that. We can get things in a timely way. And now you could say, well, why did we not do that at the start? Well, you, you, you learn as you're going this. Um, and if something did not seem as if we needed to do it at the start, and it now seems reasonable because of whatever reason, then we're trying to be responsive to that. The buses, they're in the middle of a rewriting the buses for in-person. You know, if we want to go to in-person tomorrow, we couldn't go in-person tomorrow because we have to probably sub bus this because they need to be done again. But that, that will happen on Thursday. Most of the communication will happen, but by the latest on Thursday. Uh, we had some questions. Uh, Jill, you had a few questions, particularly about ELP and others. That also, again, I don't want to really read all of this, but essentially the main things here is that even yesterday, there's new regulations about mask wearing. Now mask wearing is compulsory for all children. There is a, a wee wait period, you know, a wee transition period that kids can be given to actually get them on board to this new requirement. You'll see basically we moved stuff out, anything that's sort of like toys and so on and so forth that can't be cleaned easily. They don't use those. There's additional PPE equipment for, for staff. And where we had to move some, some, uh, some of the classrooms, we did that. We actually moved one classroom from one building to another, uh, because we needed the space in that building for a classroom. Uh, so, uh, those are some of the things that have taken place in the LP. Again, I'm not going to read it all. You can sort of get a wee sense. We did budget, I think for forty-eight or something, is that right? It's probably thereabouts. Uh, this is just factual in terms of what was the distribution. We had a question about what is the distribution of learners? You notice the two fifty-three, that number is reported every week. So it fluctuates every week and you can get a wee sense of. How many are in the respective grade levels? It, it sort of plays out about two or three to a classroom. And in some cases. Can you hear me, Jill? Oh, sorry. I'll, I'll go, I'll get real close to it, sorry. It's two fifty-three. And you can turn now forward this here, make sure the board gives us a presentation.
Believe that the superintendent, it fluctuates each week. Correct.
I appreciate the translation. Yes, thank you. So we had a question about the, the full remote and what, what, uh, what that, that's going to look like? What does that look like? Uh, so Chris is going to lead through a couple of these, uh, we slides just to explain. If you give people just a picture of what it looks like.
Good evening, everyone. So this is in response to specifically looking at the, the full-time remote learners. Who are the opt-out of in-person instruction. And so I tried to simplify some of the graphics that I shared last week. So just breaking the, the live instruction, the three components. So that's the direct live teaching at the elementary level. We often classify those as many lessons. The independent practice portion and then the recap. Dr. Adler, if you wouldn't mind advancing that slide for me. Um, so we broke everything down into just kind of four phases to describe how we'll continue to increase. Um, the amount of live instruction. So phase one is what we've been in to start the year. And that is the morning meeting, read aloud, the DI blocks is scheduled and that closing time. Um, the next piece, phase two, which is where we would start when we have everyone in on the twenty-ninth. So that is the, the teacher being live streaming for that direct instruction part of the lesson. So when the new learning is happening for math, uh, reading and writing, that would be live. And then phase three would be that independent time when students are working alone as independent suggests. Um, the teacher would be on mute, so mic off, camera off, but still available potentially for a conference or small group work. And then that phase four would be pulling in for a recap at the end of that. So it's gradually increasing that live streaming time as we face those things in. And if we could go to the next slide, it just shows the schedule for how we're going to do that. So phase one again is that first column where we are. Um, phase two starts the twenty-ninth and then the week of the fifth, bringing in the independent time. And then on the twelfth, the recap as well. So that just shows the, the pace we are trying to work to. Have more live time. Teachers did receive an email from the principals last week that. Uh, gave them an idea of how we're trying to move away from some of the, the pre-recorded practices that we're having with the slide decks. To move toward the more live teaching and we're providing small incremental examples for teachers to see each week. Since we have that extra time to continue that practice. The, our, our next piece, I'll say to refine because we have it well developed and our reopening plan is the remote learning portion. So if, if we do go fully remote, um, we want to make sure that we take out the. Uh, any ambiguity that people might perceive as to what the expectations are. So I'll start working with teachers and groups next week to get their feedback. Um, elementary teachers did receive a survey about regarding their needs yesterday as well for what we might use some of that PD time for. And I am aware at the high school, I know that Mrs. Dunn's been collecting information about the technology needs. And some of the, the challenges the teachers have faced there as well. Um, so definitely, uh, we absolutely want to be collaborating. And the, I, I was struck just thinking about the timeline of the summer in general, Mrs. Akman, when you mentioned the task force. It did end the last week of June, but we had two weeks before we finalized. So the subcommittees did meet. I know mine met the week of July, uh, July sixth. And everyone's recommendations came in on July tenth. We submitted a plan on the twenty-fourth of July and you all probably remember that on Monday, the twenty-seventh, after that Friday, the guidance changed from the state. Um, and when we did develop, um, we, we responded to those with our revised plan on the thirteenth. And that following week, all of our remote lessons that were developed, were developed by teachers. Um, so we spent hundreds of hours collectively across content areas and grade levels, developing these lessons with the teachers. So it is important to know that, um, they weren't included in that process. And, um, I feel like we are, we are making good progress and I definitely do want to spend more time with them. I had an opportunity to work with the team leaders at one of our elementary schools this week. And I'll do the same as we work through the next week and, and make sure I'm hearing from all the schools and the teachers. The, this is, uh, we talked about the day in the life a bit. So this is a kindergarten zoom-in example. Um, kindergarten is the most unique as, as I mentioned at our last meeting. Because they don't have access to written language, most of them. It makes it extra challenging and developmentally. We know that, um, student stamina for what they should actually experience live is recommended to be in small chunks. So they're on and then they're working independently and that should fluctuate throughout the day. So this gives a bit of a descriptor to what that, uh, what those kindergarten students should experience and what parents might expect. Um, and we are going to do another update to the plan. So we'll include some of this language in there as well. And I do have a day in the life slide as well with, with a student named Sam. So this is Sam who's a kindergarten student. If this is a fully remote student, this is what Sam might expect and what the family should expect throughout the day. So this is a sample schedule and, and this is just a bit of a narrative to describe according to our plan as it is written. And this is what that expectation should be. Once we work through all of those phases. So we can maximize live teaching in a, in a way that's healthy and balanced for the students at home and for the teachers that are in class.
So there are days in the life in the current plan and this is a revised one.
Yes. So there are, there's a day in the life for elementary, middle school, high school. And, um, this also just reflects what's currently in the plan about expectations for parent support. And we will certainly continue to develop this and follow up as well. But I, it was just, I, I just wanted to bring this front and center again, that these are things that we would expect parents to need to do. Based on where students are developmentally.
Uh, this will be embellished also in terms of some of the similar language that we used last year. In terms of advising parents not to be pre-recording and so on and so forth. Those, those areas that will give the teachers a little bit of, of a safety net and, and some direction and support. Uh, this is just that, as you know, I'm, I'm not going to quote this again because it'll come up in the, in the monthly report. I think you understand that basically there's one point five million and expenses, direct expenses, another five hundred thousand approximately in grants. Uh, that runs out to about two million dollars total. But we'll, we'll, we'll talk about that when we get to, uh. The next agenda items. Uh, the learning models, uh, the reopening metrics, the re-opening metrics are published every week and they, they are very good. Um, ultimately, I did hear a parent just talk about like, how do you do this? Uh, well, it really is, if you look at the, the second column, you've got seven. All right, okay. Drift away, I apologize. Uh, I did hear a question from a parent about what, what are the metrics? How do you calculate the metrics? Uh, the, the second column talks about the seven day average per hundred thousand population. So for our population, about twenty-two thousand here, and it's basically two point two for seven-day average. It's the main, in a seven days, you have fourteen cases. So the next level of moderate and, and move into a hybrid would require about fourteen cases. So it's just an indicator. And if you work out the same for the highest, about thirty-three cases, so that that's basically how you work out the metrics and happy to show the details of it, but it's basically proportional to your population. The reopening and the, across the state of Connecticut and Farquhar County, a little bit of a, of a upward trend, but still very much in the low category. I've discussed these with our medical advisor and the department again of health. The reopening's status is that we're transitioning to in-person reopening on Tuesday, September twenty-ninth. I do understand the fear and the anxiety. Listen, I have sleepless nights over this. I don't pretend that this is the perfect way to do it. But I, I am doing it with the safety, health and safety of, of our staff and our students. It's the only way I can sleep at night at all, right? Knowing that I'm trying to make the health and safety decision for the school community at large. But I'm also an automatic advisor and hence I lean heavily on the Connecticut State Department of Public Health. I lean heavily on our COVID compliance officer. I leave heavily on the medical advisor and the Department of Health and, and Darian and in close consultation with them. Their supportive of us going through this model, I will say that's right. And this is not bravado or it's not a reason to do it. But if we don't do it now, I'm not sure when, when we would go back full-time. Because as the weather changes and so on and so forth, like I have a crystal ball. I don't know how many people would place their bets that we'll be in full-time, that we could, we could go to remote very quickly or, or back to hybrid again very quickly. But I am making the recommendation that we return on September twenty-ninth. We have taken some steps to try and mitigate some, some of the concerns of the staff and they are understandable, realistic concerns. And particularly the lunchtime, I, I think is, I totally agree with them for the lunchtime. And so we would be communicating, our plan is that to communicate this to the parents on Thursday. The other considerations that I really have to take into consideration is the metrics of physical distancing, the cohorting. There are some compromises here. There definitely are. I'll reiterate it again. Getting the space, getting the space at lunchtime sometimes compromises, could compromise the cohort a bit more, right? So there are just, there are some trade-offs that, that I have explained to our medical advisors. And some are, some are more important than others, particularly when it comes to physical distance while you're eating. So I, I just want to recognize that and put that on the table. So HTRAC systems that make sure that they were, were compliant. And that we've presented the right message to parents about keeping children home and so on and so forth if they're sick. Cleaning, disinfectant, so we're making improvements in all of those areas. So it is, it is the, the recommendation to go ahead on next Tuesday and the communication would go out no later than Thursday. I put this athletic slide in because it, it pertains to some of the issues pertaining to COVID. The fall season has started for most of our, our athletes. C I A C and the Connecticut State Department of Public Health have been in, in discussion about what to do about football. So in, in collaboration with the surrounding towns and superintendents, we are supportive of the seven versus seven. Which essentially, essentially is touch football to some degree. There's no, there's no tackling and really sort of contact of any nature other than just touch football and passing. There was a, there was a proposal made, C I C, once the Connecticut State Department of Public Health said that they could not reduce that the, it's level of a high-risk sport, either activity to medium. It wouldn't do that. C I C, I don't know if I say it the way it is. C I C just made the decision to throw your towns and your superintendents and everybody under the bus in a sense of, well, go, go for a club. That puts us in a, in a rock and a hard place in terms of going against the Connecticut State Department of Public Health. I just find that to go against that recommendation is really, I, I just couldn't do that. I couldn't bring that to the table for the board here to go against that recommendation. So it's, it's not our recommendation that we do that. The superintendents in the surrounding areas are, are all on the same page about that. Then the other option is what obviously there's been discussion about the, for private private organizations to, to do eleven-on-eleven football. So I'll just give them my opinion then. There was communication that was died today and there was confusion communication. So I apologize for that, but I will be honest about this. I was concerned about the Connecticut State Department of Public Health recommendation saying you can't, you shouldn't be doing football, right? And then having that on our campus, that concerned me, right? You, we can't loan equipment. We can't do that because we're going to be implicit, implicit in, in that whole decision-making. I'm also concerned about that activity happening on campus that can impact the, the greater school community. But having said that, there are inconsistencies. You've got young kids, footballers up that it's grade plan. But they have a different set of expectations and the Connecticut State Department of Public Health has essentially been silent about that. The reality of it is those that we have no legal authority not to let private football eleven-on-eleven happen in the school system. Like, listen, no one's more proponent of athletics and sports than I am. And I, I really want the kids to play. We certainly want to support the seven-on-seven. We'll also strongly advocate where's a, where we're able to do that for spring football too, as long as it doesn't. I don't think it should, to mess up with lacrosse or otherwise, but I certainly would strongly advocate for that. The super tennis in the area relatively all agreed to not having club nor private organizations play on, on their grounds. It came clear to me this morning and I'll just be put it on the table, that we have no legal authority to do that. So I didn't want to put the, the board in another position. And that's kind of where we stand today, right? And so junior organization was apprised that should they want to, to organize that, they could play at, at the high school. I don't personally think it's a great idea to be honest, but that's, again, that's my personal and professional judgment in terms of condoning the type of arrangement that goes against Connecticut State and Public Health. But having said that, it won't be redundant. I've just outlined it as I see it. And I, I will say that for the reopening, in terms of lunch, there will be a lean on the board chair and the board just in terms of direction of how to do this. I do, I, I think we will have to come back with a couple of staff positions. They could be the monitors, additional monitors. A pair, a couple of paraprofessionals. So I'm working with the staff right now just to validate which, which coverage is going to be needed under the new scenario for lunches particularly. So I'm not quite sure what that process is, not in terms of bringing it back to the board, but I just want to flag it for now. Because I sensed that there's going to be some need in order to provide the coverage, some coverage that we need. That's not going to impact the next week starting because people will have people out there covering what we need to cover in these particular areas for the lunches, but, but I do foresee that I'm going to have to bring it back fairly quickly.
So the process would be, you can bring it up the next board meeting. It, it is a COVID-related expense, if I'm understanding what you're saying right now. And so the board could consider it and any transfers it needs to make. Much like we do any other transfer, if it's of quick and fast need, it may not have time to go through subcommittee. But the nine of us can act as a committee of the whole on a transfer as well. So I, I'm sure we'll have some more questions. I want to open it up to questions, but I think what we're all hearing is we're looking for additional staffing requests, which will have a, a transfer need from somewhere. I'm waiting to hear where. I saw multiple hands. I'll start with Mrs. Ritchie.
I just, I, I did receive some a sample schedule for over social media and I just, you forgive me, but it, it's inflammatory to me and it's disrespectful to our teachers in terms of, I understand that what it might represent, appears to represent that kids just learning at home by themselves, right? Whenever teachers have put together pre-recorded lessons in math, science, so on and so forth. It, it's just, to me, it's a deliberate misrepresentation. I understand the times where it's reached discreet times where we have kindergarten kids doing stuff, but there's other things that are thoughtful preparation to the summary compared to teachers tonight spent time doing and it's a bit more thoughtful. But with that being said.
So I think some clarity on that. Mr. Dineen and I received the sample schedule off of P T R kids. Neither of us had ever seen this sample schedule. So we asked the superintendent right before the meeting, is this a true school schedule? Because the board, I think, would be curious and concerned about this schedule. I'm just hearing the answer now. So it sounds like whatever that is, is not a school document, nor do you feel is representative of the school day.
It's, it's not representative of what actually takes place and what, and what was prepared to the kids. That, that's all. Actually, I apologize for bringing it up in this format. I probably should have done it during the night, but.
Okay. I'm going to go to Mrs. Ritchie and then I think I saw Mr. Brown and Mrs. Stein.
What I'd love to hear more about what the plans are for lunch, but it sounds like they're still in the works, but I'm, I'm feeling good about trying to get that six feet and more social distancing. So I really do appreciate that and thank you. The desk shield, so that means every student will have a shield at their desk?
Yes.
Okay, that's great too. Thank you so much for that. And I don't want to hog all the time, but then the plexiglass, is that in addition to what the teachers already have at their desks?
Yes. Should they want them, if the teachers want additional plexiglass to go right around it or for to make with a student, yes.
Okay, great. I'll let somebody else.
So, so a basic, a basic idea for, so for instance, Token Eight, the Great Hall is being used. Right? There's a space that's being used and in other schools, I think that it circulates around in particular where the elementary schools for PE. So students will be twenty minutes in the classroom, half the class twenty minutes in the, in the gymnasium. And then they switch. So that, that's the type of slight variation depending on the school.
Mr. Brown.
So a two quick one for Dr. Adley. When you were talking about the football program, some of the comments I saw from the public, we're talking about time or time of day. Fields can be used, there's no restriction, whatever the miscommunication is.
Well, I would imagine that, you know, the, the seven versus seven or whatever the priority of the school programs would, would probably take precedent over whatever, but that's, that's just a logistic to me, right?
So, so if there's eleven-on- private, that'll have the same date, time of day as this is any other program, correct?
I, I need them to, yeah, just work through the, the normal system, but, but if it's a school priority for a function that would take over, but that, but I'm, I'm thinking that, that there's a normal process for booking the fields and that's it.
Thank you. Chris, real quick, when you were talking about the remote learning and we had a discussion, I think, last week where everything sort of teacher-led, they're introducing new ideas and then we're following on. Is there any thought if we wind up going in that and having some sort of a flip model where the students are doing the background of themselves and then go to the teachers, are we looking where it's always, and I'm sure this is different for kindergarten versus high school? And on, on a scale back and forth, but are we looking for perhaps maybe flip the model a little bit where some of the work is done, pre-work done to students? So then we go for your teachers and we always have to have teachers.
I would say at the secondary level, you're seeing a lot more flipped instruction. At the elementary level, just the design of curriculum at that age is new learnings introduced, especially in math, reading and writing. If we talk about science lessons, that's, that would be very different, but, but yes.
Okay. And I guess the only question here is, as we get into the range, where's more appropriate to have that flip structure? Do we have any other resources for delivery? Do you want to spend more time on the subject? Is there access available to them to explore at their own page? Should they have an interest in that law?
I would say yes, depending on which level you're, you're talking about.
Mrs. Stein. I think my question's probably directed best at Chris. So with full reopening, if the student has to quarantine, what is the process to make sure they get access to a live stream classroom if, for instance, there aren't full remote learners? I imagine at the elementary, it's probably easier. You're one classroom teacher. Middle school, you have a team, but at the high school, when you have eight possible teachers, how is that coordinated? How is it communicated? Do the parents reach out to Alicia? Does she coordinate? I just want to, a lot of parents have asked that question. I think we need to be clear on how a student accesses learning when they're in a quarantine situation.
So it actually, one of the triggers in Alicia jump in with this is attendance. So when a student is out for attendance because of needing to quarantine, how attendance gets taken for that student changes. They move from an in-person learner to, or they're quoted as a remote learner. So that way the teacher knows through the attendance system that that student is remote.
Great. Thank you.
Actually, could I just mention, because sometimes just you want to read the slides, but then I forget about mentioning something. So, so something that Alicia put in place and I, I want to appreciate like, for instance, this weekend on the Token Eight stuff, you can imagine that they might have contact tracing and discussions that took place. Alicia has set up a twenty-four hour reporting system for COVID cases, including the weekend, that goes right to her phone. And, and so we're not going to be waiting till Monday morning to hear and respond back to, to issues. So I want to recognize and thank her for that because it will go direct to her phone at the weekends.
I, I guess my follow-up to that is, once we go for a mode, if we do have multiple quarantine situations, is, does Alicia need help? Is she capable of being the, you know, what support does she need? And does she have it available if need be?
So we, we did, or the board did approve a couple of positions, right? Additional positions to provide support. So she will be utilizing some of her own staff to do that. So at this point, other than that, the, the weekend, somebody has to lift that, that, lift that phone, right? I very much appreciate that, that she does respond to that. At this point, I, I think she's fine. But again, I've said to all the staff that if you, if you need more support, the board here to, to help us out.
I just think about the new Keno situation today with fifty-three kids at once who, you know, that's a lot. And I just want to make sure that Alicia knows she has our support.
Well, she's listening right now.
Can you hear, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Yes, I, I feel like I have support and also we'll be working with my nurses to see if they would like to help out when we need extra support. So I, I know there are some that are willing to do more work and we will tap into that. And then if that resource burns out, then we'll ask, I'll be asking you for some more support there.
Mr. Maroni.
Can I just jump back on that attendance? Sorry, first, Katie, I guess a, a lot of we did get attendance guidance recently after the school year started as well. So we are going to draft some local practices to get us through this time and there is potential policy language coming from shipment and Goodman that we're waiting to hear about. So we'll tie that all together. Should that transpire and that will be part of what's included there.
Just a point as well, Mrs. Stein, you said full remote again.
Oh, sorry. I always say that. I apologize.
My question is to, I guess both Chris and Alan is that the sample, the sample day, which we're refuting, how, how does that match with what we're shown on the slide? I'd like to see or understand how many hours that is or minutes that is of, of live, live learning as well as you mentioned phase one, two, three, four, is, was the slide representative of phase four or phase two or where, which, which phase is that slide represented?
That's phase four. So that would be, that references the student being on for sort of that deck's not up anymore. So the schedule that goes with it, that was, was in that slide shows the, the length of time that would represent the synchronous teaching. That's there or the, the live streaming.
So do we have an expectation of what that will be come Tuesday?
So come Tuesday, it would be for the direct instruction component. So it's phase one, meaning the, the morning meeting with the read aloud, DI block, if it's scheduled, and closing circle plus the fifteen minutes times three, so forty-five additional minutes of direct instruction, which follows the, the, the schedule of the teacher that day. So it's not forty-five continuous minutes. You don't get your math lesson, your reading lesson, your writing lesson. It's one that occurs during the day with the schedule.
And then, and then that begins to change October fifth again. And how, how much more instruction?
So that. So that next window of time, and it's, it does vary by grade, because it is not, it's not the same for every grade. So if, to take K one, two, they would have a little bit less independent time, perhaps twenty to twenty-five minutes after the ten to fifteen minutes. But older students might have more like thirty to forty minutes. And then the recap is an additional five to ten minutes of live time that gets tagged on.
Mr. Deneen?
So just kind of to follow up on that, Chris, the, we're thirteen days in, we're going to fall. You've rolled out this, which is a great slide that shows phase two, three, and four, taking us out to October twelfth. There's already a concern, we've heard consistently from parents, as to what they're not getting, and the time that they're not getting, and the learning that they're not getting. So this seems to continue to push it out a little bit. So how do you talk, can you talk through that? As to how we're going to make sure these students make up time that has been lost?
So for the, the fully remote learners, so I would say the, the overall design was to address S E L first. And the next thing we are saying is, when there is new learning, that's what we're prioritizing next. And after that, the, the part that we are working with, and this is the biggest challenge for a teacher in the classroom, is when students are working independently, meeting the needs of the students that are in the class and the students at home. And that part takes practice and training, especially if you're going to try to independently conference with them, or to pair them with another student that's in the group. So we are, as we are learning this and experimenting with it, we're, this is a timeline that I think we can work with to increase that time.
Oh, sorry, I thought you were.
Okay, no. So, thank you. So what I feel like here, there may be a need for more resources as you assess how this works and what the needs of those students are. And then I would just ask the administration, you went over in your slides, a need for potential monitors for lunches, additional maintenance crew, additional para. I think I would need to, or I would like to understand that sooner than later. Next board meeting is not till October thirteenth, and we're going back to school next Tuesday. So I got to be honest, I'm feeling a little behind the eight ball here in resources and what the needs may be as we go to full reopening. And who knows, two weeks down the road, what that looks like in terms of changes based on some stuff we've seen in other districts. So we may need a special meeting in between, but I think we need to align and understand what the resource needs are sooner than later.
Well, they just, the board does know about, the nurses does know about the maintenance, because those already been pre-flying. But yes, the other ones, yes.
Tech support.
Yeah. So what we're looking at is tech support and what, and monitors. So before we even have a special meeting, I would charge the administration with going through their budget and seeing if anything requires a board transfer, or if you have it within your silos that don't require board transfers. If you require a board transfer, I think this board is committing to acting as fast as you need us to act. So you just need to let us know, so we can understand.
Add on that, if it falls in that COVID, and we'll talk about this a little more during the finance report. But it might fall into that COVID R C, so the way we're treating that is a little differently than.
Yeah, I think they probably all will. As we just kind of walk around the room, we did hear a teacher, and I just think this is, this is logistical, but you do need to think about it. If we have sinks where wash basins are running out, what does that look like? What does, how does a teacher get more water for that? Because if we're saying hand washing is required, and yes, we have the sinks, but the sinks need more water, or we need hand sanitizers. Like, I, I want to make sure that those kind of very everyday basic needs are addressed for teachers in the classrooms with kids.
Yeah, that, that, those issues should be directed to the administration of the building right away, so that we can, we can crack them. Unless I'm mistaken, I'm not familiar with that one. But, but I have no doubt that it might be the case, if they're reported directly to the administration, the principal will take care of it.
So I agree, because I think the concern is when they start coming to the board table, we feel as if we need to kind of, if they're coming up to us, for lack of a better term, we feel like we need to push back down. So I agree that teachers should be going to their administrators, but now that they're here, I think we're trying to give voice to that. We want to make sure kids have the ability to wash their hands, since we place such an emphasis on that being so important.
I don't, Richard, have we heard about that? Have we heard that concern?
I had not heard of that yet.
So we can go back and check building, but, but those sorts of things. I'm going to go to people who have a chance, so Mr. Seany and then Mr. Burke.
One of the questions that keeps coming up is, what would, what's the protocol of policies that closes school based on caseloads or outbreaks? Maybe you could talk generically about that. I know it's going to be a subjective type decision based on what's going on. But if you could give some inputs so the community understands the decision process.
Yeah, so, so it is going to, it is fluid, and it's not a perfect sense by science, by any means of imagination. Because you, you heard tonight from people who are highly qualified and from CDC on down, down the system, that there's different, there are different opinions. But there could be a variety of things. If, if, if we have enough children impacted, that would impact a school, for example, we, we might just have to isolate a complete school. If we don't have enough staff to run the school system, we may need to close the school system. But I don't want, I'm not suggesting things, but those are the types of things that potentially could happen. And could potentially could happen if you go back full time, if we do, as I'm suggesting. So I, I understand that. So those we would look at, like, on a, on a case-by-case basis, when again, we would circle the experts and have a discussion about those. But they range from, from small number of cases adding up to significant situations that just expand and just the logistics of it just would make it impossible to either run a, run a school or a school system, or maybe it's a classic, or otherwise. But, and, and anytime you continue to cross-populate a little bit with cohorts, that's, that's also more problematic and expensive. So we'll note when we see it, how it's going to impact will be, will be done methodically and thoughtfully and diligently, the way this sort of simple case of the weekend was. But you can go from there to fifty-five at New Canaan to, anything else? I'm sorry, I'm not more specific, John, but.
No, no.
Dr. Adley, I think Alicia wanted to add to that on.
Oh, she, okay. Alicia, go ahead.
So it's hard to put a hard number to it, but I think it really, I think it will depend on how many schools are affected by one case, or if you have, like, in New Canaan, they had four, if I'm, if I heard correctly. I did not read anything about it, but four cases that, that quarantined fifty-five kids. You know, if we're having several cases that we're quarantining fifty-five, a hundred kids out of one school, we may decide that we want to close that school for, you know, two to five days to kind of get a handle on where we are. Some schools have closed for fourteen days. I think that's probably just so that everyone is quarantined for fourteen days, which is the recommendation if you've been a close contact. So in other times, not COVID, when we've had outbreaks of influenza or whatever, that, those might have, the deciding factor to close a school at that point would have been if you had teaching staff, so many teachers out that you couldn't staff your school. So that, that will be also a huge consideration on whether or not we can staff the school. So it will really depend on the size and scope of, of the case and how it, how it affects across multiple schools. So it could be one school, you could end up closing the whole district for a few days, depending on, on how many people. You know, we've been fortunate so far, but you know, that is, any minute now, I know will change. So, you know, we'll just have to kind of wait and see. But we will try to be as transparent as possible if that is what it looks like we need to do.
So I just, just to stress that point a little bit, I think this goes to what we're hearing as a board and what we're kind of seeing out in the community. There is no way to do this without teacher, parent, board, administration cooperation. We can all have different viewpoints, but we need teachers to teach kids. That, that is a very clear message we are receiving. We need kids that are healthy, so that, you know, we can try to go back in person or hybrid. Or, or if kids are sick, we need reporting, so we know whether to quarantine or close down school. This is going to be a situation where we need everyone at some point, and I understand the fear and anxiety I would echo. And I think most board members, at least the ones I've spoken to, every night go to bed thinking about this and, and how to do this safely. We need everybody communicating. We need everyone talking. We don't need anyone siloed on this. There are a lot of different opinions, but at the end of the day, this all works when we work together. So I just think, John, actually, your question highlights exactly that point. We need teachers to need to teach kids. We need healthy kids to keep teachers safe. We need reporting. We need questions. So this process will continue, this questioning process, these changes will continue. Sorry. Mr. Burke, I think I go to you, Mrs. McCamman, I'm sorry.
Okay. And speaking of student health, as we approach full opening and these buildings become heavily populated again, you feel you have ready all the resources related to safety, whether it's Plexiglas, whether it's cleaning supplies, whether it's staffing available to maintain those buildings. All those things are ready and in place, as opposed to still waiting for delivery on something, hopefully the, a couple of days.
I believe we have a state of readiness for the mitigation strategies that, that we need in order to reopen. Would I like the things that I'm saying and I'm adding now, like, right now? Yes, I would. But that, but that, that I do not believe that should prevent us from opening in time. I want to say on time, but open them when we think we can open.
Thank you.
Mrs. McCamman and Mr. Deneen, I'll come back over.
Thank you for the presentation very much, particularly for all the new information and technology in the O P as well. A question for next one, Chris, would you spend a little time, one of the things I, that you touched on in, in elementary school, starting to think about how you get kids to work together, especially if you've got one at home and you've got one in the, in the, or one in the school. For the secondary level, would you spend a little time talking to us? We've had some questions about how kids at that level get integrated with their classrooms from either an educational or a social perspective. We'd love to hear more. And then my second comment is, Alicia, I don't know if you've seen, I think it's in West Hartford, there's a dashboard where they're, they have all the schools listed, and then they just list cases. And then I offer it as a possible communication tool. I'd be happy to send it to you after the meeting. This would be an easy way for parents to see what's going on in the district, in terms of case.
Yeah, we have, we have seen that, and we're going to, we're going to do a similar dashboard.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Alicia, did you have something to add to that?
No, I was just going to say, we, we've talked about it. I just need to find out how to get it added to our website and how to update, figure out a way to have it automatically update or update easily without having to go through an I T iteration to have it done every day or weekly.
If that's a plan, can we make sure that we hear about privacy concerns surrounding something like that? If it is one case in a school and one person is out, I'd just like to know what are concerns about that with a dashboard? Sorry, I didn't mean to hide you. Go on, Joe. And then I want to push on the schedule comment for just a minute. I think that the community is honestly trying to figure out how to have a dialogue about this, about our kids and learning. And we're doing some of it well, and we're doing some of it not so well. So I think if we just take a moment and say, you know, a lot of people are trying to understand what education looks like. There are a lot of people trying to understand how to communicate and what to communicate. And I think there might be some ways that we can all do better in this process. We can communicate better with our parents, we understand what expectations are. I'm so appreciative of some of the work we saw on Thursday. Chris, thank you. This is fantastic to see. And we can also ask our parents, if they have questions, to reach out to their teachers, to reach out to their principals. But, you know, I, I think the intent is, is to communicate, and so hopefully, we can, we can, you know, take it in that spirit. We're trying to figure it out. We can, to your point, Tara, work together on this. But I, you know, I, I think some of the, again, I want to make sure we've heard from teachers, they're feeling embarrassed. And I, I think there's, people are really trying hard to figure out how to advocate to kids, how to support teachers, how to support the school system. So I, I just wanted to, to offer a different point of view on that.
I think I'm with you. I certainly take it in the, in the spirit of, of the way it's being presented. I don't, I don't take it in any other.
Yeah, I was just filling in that we were presented with something and asked if this was the school schedule.
Okay. Sorry.
Yeah. You mentioned the, the comment, you can, Mr. Deneen and I presented it to Dr. Adley, because we had never seen the document before and said, is this a school document? Is this what teaching and learning has? Because we haven't seen this document. It was not. I think I was clarifying what Dr. Adley was answering. But I agree with you, parent communication, figuring that way out with the district will be strong. Mrs. Ritchie?
So I just wanted to build on that, the schedule. I appreciate that, Chris. Thank you so much for that detail. And knowing how it's going to phase out is important, too. I just was wondering how this is being communicated to parents, so the parents are clear that this is what's happening. This is the amount of time we're spending, morning meeting, D block, closing circle, reading, writing, et cetera. Just so they're clear and they understand, hopefully, most students will be in person on Tuesday, and we won't have any big flare-ups and immediate need to go to remote. But there are remote learners. This is how they're going to be learning. We could all be, and all the students could be in that remote at some point. So how are we communicating that to parents, so that they're clear and they understand what is expected of their students at home?
So for our full remote learners, they'll hear from their principals by the end of the week with the detail on this. As we develop, as we, I don't want to call it develop, because it's very well-developed, as we refine our remote learning plan, should we need to go to full remote, there'll be a communication, because we'll just update the larger plan in general, because that's such a big, big chunk of our reopening plan. So we'll notify that through a written communication when that's ready to be shared.
Just to add, I think sometimes, and I think this is what Mrs. McCamman and Mrs. Ritchie are touching upon, either we at the board table, or as teachers and administrators, we're kind of so used to what to expect, that I think for parents who for the first time are acting in the roles of teacher, part of this is that if they can set their expectations by knowing what's being asked of them, they can sort their schedules, their lives, and they're not thinking it's going to be something that it, different than it is. So I would agree, this is great. The more we can communicate, or the more the administration can communicate, because the board really can't communicate that, we are expecting you to need to work with your student this many hours a day, or at this time during the day. I think that will ease some of the anxiety. Anxiety might be the word, just, just some of the, the, the wilderness of parents who are now acting in a role that they did not really ever train for. So we appreciate their partnership on that. I think we understand kind of their concern. But the more we can push out what's expected, I think, I think it'll help ease some of those concerns. Mr. Deneen?
So I think, just, just to follow up on that, I think, you know, what I'm hearing is that it's not just the parents, they've got grandparents, they've got kids home from college. So, you know, people are organizing, people need to plan their day, because people are working from home, too. So if we set the right expectations as to what the commitment we need from the parent, the caregiver, the grandparent, the, the older sibling, I, I think that really goes a long way to people understanding what the expectations are. Just to, just to follow up on the, the dashboard, I think, Dr. Adley, in the, in the, the page of the deck that goes over the COVID numbers, I think it would help with some of the questions people have about, how does it relate to our numbers, if we could add a column in there that ties it to Darien specific and the Darien population? I think that would help, because again, you, you mentioned fourteen, you mentioned thirty-five. So like, where do you come up with those numbers? Because this is seven day per hundred, where we're based on twenty-two thousand population. So I think that would help people understand.
We're going to add that.
And then I would just, on, on the, the technology side, on those number of tickets that are coming, and I think as we go back to full learning, let's think about the window we have, they're back in school. What do we need to do to make sure the technology is where we need to be? Does everyone have their passwords? Is there some type of communication? Hey, just checking in on you and your computer, you know, do you have everything you need? Is it working so that when we go back into, hopefully not, but some type of remote type learning, you don't have that spike again of a thousand or two thousand tickets? Like, I think we need to be proactive or have a command center set up. Like, I think we need to be proactive or have a command center set up around the technology side to stay ahead of it.
I'm gonna add on that because I know some teachers are sending very explicit instructions on the technology and then others aren't. So there's, it would be good if there's just consistency because I think some parents are getting a lot of information about, you know, if this happens, this is how, there was some interesting thing that Dr. McGeadigan told parents to do. Like, they had to log in five times and then they would get let in or something along those lines. So it's these little tricks that not every child knew. Some teachers are sending out that information. So it's just, I don't know if there's just like a cheat sheet and you go out to parents case we got a bit, have to go remote. Here's what you need to do to ensure that your child is able to access all these different programs, whether it be CSO or just morning meeting, Zooms and that kind of stuff. I think that would be helpful.
So we do have the, the cheat sheets available on the reopening website. There's a bunch of videos that troubleshoot some of the most common, the common challenges that people face. And the universal fix for the, the Zoom log out is to restart the device, which is often the universal trick for technology. So don't underestimate the power of restarting your device if you cannot log into Zoom.
So can I just, I, I hear you on it's on the website. But I think we have to think about that it, it's on the website, but what I'm hearing and the feedback we're getting is that's not working. So people want communication over and above that. And I think we have to keep that in mind. It's very easy to point people to a website, but our website's not all that easy, all that time to maneuver around. So again, stuff like that, I think, has to be very specific communication.
And I did do a direct link on my Friday communication to that exact page of the website and I'll continue to do that in my communications.
Mr. Murray.
I would like to touch on a couple of things. One, Duke, I agree with you. I think this, this IT part, while we're in school, I think we should take advantage of that and do just whether you do a one-on-one session, just work, you know, walk you through what you have to do to make sure you're comfortable with it. And, and I think we can take advantage of that somehow. And maybe that just need to continue until if, if and when we have to. And I really think the communication is very important on these schedules. Sorry, I think the communication is super important on the schedules. One of the other things that we've heard about as well is that the, the remote and the hybrid plan is not robust enough for, for parents and students and that they end up going into other avenues, which then they go to Chelsea Piers or the Y or higher tutors or and that kind of defeats the whole point of having cohorting and, and so, and, and this, this aspect. And now you're inviting more people in. Do we have any comment on that and how we can address that?
Which, which part of it?
The fact of that we, that, that our, our curriculum may not be robust enough, that they need to have outside influences help them to do, to, to educate their children.
So I, I understand the, the robust nature of it. I think if parents, I said in the most respectful way, if, if parents were in K to two, sitting in the classrooms at the start of the school year, they still wouldn't think it was robust because they're spending an awful lot of time on transition routines. And now you're doubling them up with hand washing and, and other things. They, they, honestly, me as a parent, you as a parent, might not think, well, what, what are they doing in school? That's like, I mean, how, how long does it take to train them to, to walk outside, go to the bathroom, do, do all those things? It's hard to do that in a, it's hard to do that in a remote opening of school type scenario. But clearly, we want to make the, the curriculum and the, the portals and the interfaces as rigorous as possible on that and as reasonable as possible to, for, for the teachers to work on. This isn't going to be, like, when you go on, on the 29th, it will help tremendously because you've got people in school, right? But there'll still be things that are going to come out, disconnects along the way somewhere. But clearly, we want to make sure that the curriculum is, is rigorous enough and there's the adequate amount of time spent with the teacher on it. But, so, I hear you. Yep.
One second. I saw another hand I thought over here. Nope. Okay. Well, you've got a couple, Mr. Seronia and Ms. Ritchie will come back.
Okay, so I have a question on, on lunch and the teachers. So what, what, what we heard, at least I heard tonight, was the teachers feel like they have a good part of the plan. And you mentioned the lunch, lunch policy will be rolling out Thursday. Have teachers been appraised of this and been brought into the loop or will this be given to them Thursday evening? And they'll have one day to digest and have to walk in Tuesday morning and, and work with this on the 29th.
So we've had a sort of short, when you may say, well, you, you had all summer to do. That's right. Okay. But we were opening and we want to have lunch in a certain way. It's come to the table that we'd like to do it differently and be responsive. So we've had a fairly short window to do that. We did it. I believe we applied the union representation that we have come up with a solution for that. That's a minister, for the most part, that's a minister task. And I think, I think union representation would be supportive of that in the sense of, look, can you solve? Can you get us into lunch? And that's what we went and did. So that will be explained to them through the building principles over the next few days.
Mrs. Ritchie.
I, I hear something is going on with football and I know it's operational. What do I need to know as a board member? Is, what's going, like?
What, what do you need to know?
Yeah, I'm very confused.
Okay.
Are we having seven on seven? Are we not having seven on seven?
We're. So, so we are supporting seven on seven football with a couple of, what we play in Stanford, Grange, who's on, you can, and probably multiple times because it's, that's just the way they're structured, so to speak. But we are playing, we're advocating for seven on seven on our school property, on school grounds. So that's essentially, and we're also will be advocating and supporting for a, a, some sort of spring season for the kids if they can go down that way. But that remains to be seen. So yes, and, and in relation to CIC and the Connecticut State Department Health saying that we can't really do it for the most part, right? We're willing to support for the kids seven on seven. We're not willing to run a club and circumvent what CIC said, circumvent the Connecticut State Department of Health's guidelines. Right? So we're not running the club for, because if you, CIC left a window to run a club, high school club that plays 11 on 11 football. I don't think we can do that. That's just, I think that's crazy to be honest with you, right? But I just was pointing it out, but you, there is another opportunity. If an outside organization wants to organize, independent of the school, completely independent of the school, and set up 11 on 11 football to some arrangement, we don't have any legal basis not to rent the fields to them. So if they want to do that, they can do that.
Okay.
Does that make, does that make, as a board member?
Okay.
It's seven on seven.
Let's back up a little bit here because now we have so many, the usage of terms is different now. So as a school system, the CAC sanctioned football season for 11 v 11 was canceled. CAC then said schools could look at clubs. I have never heard a request from the football or from anywhere in the administration for a club. Should a request come forward of seven v seven, it would not be board level if you're asking what the boards do. That's administrative. The only thing I would ask, that if that becomes FCAC sanctioned, and there's also a private club, I don't want these kids caught in eligibility wars. That all needs to be very clear to these boys who I would say have received conflicting information since August. The question that arose, that I think Dr. Adley is identifying today is private clubs. Private clubs have played in all sports, no matter a varsity level, since Connecticut reopened in July. The question that becomes for a board in terms of field usage is can you restrict your access to the fields for clubs? And the answer is, private clubs, thank you. This is where, I'm gonna call private organizations or premier, what many people would call premier sports, right? Versus a high school club. And there's no legal basis to do so. So just like there are premier lacrosse teams that play on our fields, there are premier soccer teams that play on our fields. Should there ever exist a premier football club, they are governed by different bodies than the Board of Education. So we don't get into that. That's not what we do. If what the superintendent is going to talk to us about a seven v seven, anything, all I ask is that we make sure that these boys know whether that's just some intermural type thing where people can put together or if this is sanctioned by FCAC, which I know FCAC has mentioned, I don't want the boys caught in, or any student athlete, quite frankly, caught in any eligibility wars because of something like that. So this is not a board issue, is the long and short of what's going on.
So we just got a tremendous amount of communication today on the issue and I just want to be as informed as possible. So I was just confused, are we doing seven on seven as a sport at the high school? Or is that now canceled because there's some private organization that's going to run something separately?
We, we intend to do seven on seven at, at the high school. We're supportive of that. It doesn't mean that they, the children can't play somewhere else.
They're not, they wouldn't be mutually exclusive.
That's all I want to make sure, that they're not mutually.
I mean, yeah.
Yeah.
You raised an eligibility question, but.
Yeah, I, I think the athletic department needs to sort that out. And that's where the Board of Education, but yes, we did receive communication. I tried to answer as many as I could. You'll probably get a flurry of emails after me because I didn't get to answer them off the board. That this is not a board call. It sounds like they've worked it out on the operations side.
I should go back, just to read the slide would be much easier. So I, I did want to make a note in our policy and our reopening plan, we said we would not have spectators. So I just want to share as, as things evolve, okay, this is one of the things that I think we can join the rest of the SCAC teams. Because superintendents tried to get together and say, is there a way that we would give an opportunity for parents of seniors to do something? So essentially, we have agreed to give each family, parent or each student who plays, each athlete who plays on a varsity team, basically two lanyards. That will get you in, that will get you into our fields and it will get you into away venues, provided they agree to the same thing. And most of them, I think, have done that. I'm happy enough to support that. I think that's reasonable. It's outside, it limits it, it gives our senior parents visibility. I think that's a reasonable, for all sports, I think that's a reasonable accommodation.
So Dr. Adley, we're using senior and varsity interchangeable. Is it for varsity, all varsity rosters or seniors?
Senior athletes.
Well, given the, the other teams that are, the, the other schools are involved in it, they're taking just a varsity, the varsity team. Each would, you might, there may be some kids who are not.
With a senior athlete on the, if you, if you're a sophomore and playing varsity, do you get a lanyard?
I think you do, yes.
Okay. I only heard.
For simplicity, I think so, yes.
Okay. Mr. Brown.
The lanyards, whether it's varsity or senior, those are going to the parents of the seven on seven program or a club program? I just, I named this, I'm sorry.
For seven on seven, yes.
For the seven on seven.
This is not football. This is not football.
Yes.
This is varsity sports. So seven v seven, you need to come back to us on for a variety of reasons, not that it can be precluded. But Dr. Adley, I understand, and I'm hearing this for the first time, that you're saying varsity teams, each player on a varsity team will receive two lanyards and those are the guests who can attend games.
That's what, that is what the.
That's the recommendation.
That's the recommendation, provided when I go back to my peers, it doesn't change again, but that's the recommendation.
So we'll look for an update again, not a board issue, but a useful update for the community. Mr. Burke.
And I apologize because I only raise this, ask this question for clarity based on what you said. But to the extent that other premier teams might be using or are currently using these fields for their teams, the lanyard, the lanyard policy is just related to high school sponsored sports. These private teams that come onto our fields, whether it's the DSA, the GGFL, D-Lax, whatever it is, they're running their own attendance policy as, as opposed to the district, if I'm understanding what you're saying.
Correct. As long as people aren't doing something really silly.
Understood. Thank you.
Mr. Murray.
Yeah, so you mentioned that the private football team could not use our equipment because that would be complicit. And I don't quite understand that distinction. If, if we're, if we're paying coaches and we're, we're leasing the use of the fields, why couldn't we lease the equipment?
So on their legal counsel, that, that's advice have been given, that's what all the rest of the schools in our area are doing. But that's essentially, we can't be seen to be circumventing the Connecticut State Department of Public Health's rules by providing a forum, in this case through equipment, to let them play 11 on 11.
It's a liability issue.
Yeah.
Field usage, we have a policy that governs field usage. We are not necessarily, we are not paying coaches on a private team. So just like anything, let's just go back to like, DSA says, I want to rent your fields, I'm gonna run a youth soccer program. Great. We don't ask them how old the kids are. They have to figure out their own eligibility. Let's just say football premier, DJFL says, I'm going to run a high school team. They have their own governance, their own management, just like they do for their eighth grade players, for their fourth grade players. Just, sorry, Mr. Senior.
Sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off.
No, go ahead.
I think it should be also mentioned, the private leagues have different health guidance and rely on the reopening plan at Connecticut. You know, and, and if you look back at what the Department of Public Health, they specifically talked about interscholastic sports. Private leagues are not interscholastic. So there's a, again, to, Dr. Adley said it a million times. There's so many conflicting and ambiguous rules. But that is what is allowing the private leagues in this state to operate. And we got a lot of, at least I got a lot of questions, why are these out of state lacrosse teams coming in over the summer? Again, it was allowed by state regs and the Connecticut reopening plan. That's the way. Doesn't make sense, but that's the way it's happened.
We could probably keep asking. I think that's a great point to put a nail in it for football. I think, sorry, did I cut anyone else off on education questions? Mr. Deneen.
Just one last question on this. I would ask us to think about from an organizational standpoint that on a go-forward basis, we put updates on the school opening at the top of the agenda. I think that's our focus over the next couple of months. And I think we started the opening of schools at 10 o'clock at night. There's a lot of good information on this agenda, but I think we need to prioritize. And I think opening of schools should be the first presentation on the agendas.
I agree. I support that.
Agreed.
That's a good courteous move. Yes, I think our staff would enjoy that. Appreciate that.
As we move into Wednesday.
Any other questions on school reopening? Great. We will, any other questions, comments? Okay, we'll move on to the discussion of the August 2020, 2021 financial report and possible action on budget transfers.
Eddie Allen actually has a clicker. So this is the first financial report of fiscal '21. We are currently projecting a deficit of $1,993,74, or just over 1%. It is broken down into three sections. The general education RCs are forecasting a surplus of $564,444. Well, the special, special education RCs are forecasting a slight deficit of $56,850. And we do, as we mentioned earlier, have reopening costs tentatively forecast at 1.6 million, which leaves that deficit of 1.1. Alan actually shared this earlier, but we do have 1.6 million of operating expenditures, grants of $482,000 for total expenditures of just over two point, just over $2 million. Salaries right now are forecasted at a deficit of $546,410. That is again primarily due to the reopening costs, which contribute $910,000, which are those sections that were added at the elementary level, as well as an increase in the nurse. We do have some partial savings in K-5 enrollment sections, which are under budget. And then as mentioned earlier, we are, we do have a recommendation for additional paraprofessional at Oxbridge and for special education teacher age where you see the deficit of 138,000. The operating section of the budget is also forecasted at a deficit of $382,387. This again is due to the reopening expenditures, which this section make up just over a half a million dollars. Those expenditures are largely things like plexiglass, hand sanitizer stations, software, items like that. We do have a surplus in non-public tuition within special education and music transportation. We do have a surplus in non-public tuition within special education and music transportation. Fixed is the one area of surplus in the budget at just over $46,000. Regular transportation is expected to be to the positive, as we do have less than 180 school days this year. And then small savings in property insurance, workers' compensation, and then student accident insurance. Equipment is also forecasted at a negative $144,876. And again, that is due to the reopening expenditures highlighted earlier. This includes things like the document cameras, charging stations, and some laptops. Revenue is also short by about $72,000. We are not renting our buildings, at least through December 30th. And so we are forecasting a deficit there of about $42,000. However, field rentals have exceeded expectations, and that's largely due to Darian Summer School being virtual this year. So it allowed us to rent our fields greater this summer, set the positive $33,000. Summer School exceeded expectations at just over $20,000 better. And as Alan mentioned earlier, we do have less paying ELP students than budget. So we are forecasting a deficit of $83,000 there. So we do have two transfers for the board to consider. The first one is to add four special education paraprofessionals. We are recommending this come out of budget control. And then a portion of it coming from additional salary savings within the budget. And then another transfer for $34,710. And this is to add the one general education paraprofessional to Oxbridge due enrollment in fourth grade.
Mrs. Ritchie, anything to add?
The reopening expenses that we saw yesterday, does that include the new Plexiglas?
No.
Okay, so that wouldn't include the technology support?
No.
Okay, and it wouldn't include the lunch, additional lunch support and the desk shield? Okay, I just want to clarify, so that number will go up because?
Correct.
Now we're buying more supplies and we're in need of more FTEs?
Correct.
Okay, and as we walked through ECR during the meeting?
Sure.
I was hoping you could just, I like to give an annual refresher to everybody, so we're, because it is complex and I think it's a good reminder, just basically, you know, give a basic overview of how that works. And we are trending, well, we're seeing that that percentage is probably going to come down from what we have projected in our budget.
Sure, so we did reach out to the state to get some guidance on what the potential reimbursement will be. We won't actually get official preliminary guidance probably until December, and then official numbers probably not until the spring. But they are estimating it, it'll be anywhere between 67 and 70% of reimbursement rate. So we did budget 75% as reimbursement rate. So on the low end, if our expenditures stay as expected, and our four-and-a-half times threshold stays as expected, we could lose $247,000. If it's at that 70%, it'd be about $155,000. So we do track each individual student, we do have to submit claims on each individual student. It's total dollar amounts that impact an individual student, whether it's tuition or transportation or any related services. We do have to assume the full cost of that student up to that four-and-a-half times threshold. So for fiscal '21, we budgeted that threshold at about $102,000. That won't be officially set until January. So you have to spend the first $102,000 in this case, and then anything over that, you would get that reimbursement rate of, say, 67 to 70%. There are two submissions that occur, one on December 1st, which is your preliminary submission, and then another one on March 1st. And then, just like everything else that we have, we get audited every year. And so they'll look at that submission from March 1st and see what changed from March 1st to June 30th. So you do submit a projection, which includes, you know, about eight months of actuals and then a few months of projected cost. And then anything that changes from that March 1st to June 30th period is considered an ECR adjustment, which the state tags on to ECS funds, which go directly to the town. And that's usually on the third installment that goes to the town for ECS. And it could be positive or negative depending on how that audit adjustment works.
Great, thank you. Any questions on that? I'll just say that we did, we have signaled to the Board of Finance over the last two years that we saw student, our eligible student submission rates dropping. And now also looks like the state is estimating a lower reimbursement rate. So couple those two factors in, and I think we're looking at a significant decline of excess costs that we will be seeing in our upcoming budget, or at least projected in our upcoming budget.
So just to add on that, because I did watch the Board of Finance meeting from last week, and they did talk about fiscal year '20. I just, I did speak to Rich about communicating with Jen frequently and just making sure they understand the process and how it's working and keep them in the loop so they know and are aware of those trends as well.
Okay, so if there's no other questions, then that'll entertain a motion to approve the proposed budget transfers as outlined in the budget report. So moved by Mr. Burke and Mrs. Stein, all in favor, and that is unanimous. Thank you, everybody. We will move on to further discussion and possible action on the board master agenda for August 2020. Dr. Adley, is there anything you'd like to say on this?
Just the update to the strategic plan is noted for October 27th and November 24th, so we'll get this done before Thanksgiving. But the dates could change depending on if we will have a special work session or otherwise. But we would certainly like to get this wrapped up. The work of the actual committee has more or less been completed. So thank you to Katie and Jill for serving on that committee. But, so these two dates are reserved for the completion.
What I would ask of board members is please take a thorough read through of it. I need to kind of plan for work and whether some of it is going to be best served in a regular meeting or a special work session, I just need to know. So email me kind of your thoughts after you take a good deep dive into it. Are there any other questions on the board master agenda? Okay, with that, can I entertain a motion to approve the board master agenda for August 2020 through February 2021? Mr. Maroni, so moves, Mr. Deneen seconds, all in favor, and that is unanimous. Thank you, everyone. The next was in addition to our agenda tonight for the creation of a communications committee. Mr. Maroni, as it is your motion, I will let you lead off with it.
Yes, so I've done some research in looking at other districts in our DIRG. So Simsbury, Ridgefield, Weston Wilton, Westport, Simsbury, and Easton all have at least a community outreach committee or a separate communications committee or a policy and communications committee. Simsbury goes to say that families need to be included in the workings of schools in many different ways to make them feel an essential part of the educational process. Thus, the Board of Education will commit to seeing that schools develop new and more meaningful ways for parents to be actively involved in their children's education. The district shall ensure that information communicated to parents is in an understandable format and is adaptable if needed. Parents will be consulted in order to achieve this goal. Ridgefield has a purpose and role of their outreach committee. Quote, "The committee supports the Board of Education goal of improved communication. The committee will establish consistent outreach activities, which may include, but are not limited to, public forums, newspaper columns, Board of Education newsletter. The committee aims for its outreach activities to be for parents, the community at large, townwide committees that involve students, and other boards." I think that we have a community outreach and communication in our strategic plan, I'm sorry, in our master agenda goals. And I think having 90 minutes of public comment just screams that we need a communication committee. Thank you.
Mr. Maroni, how would you envision this working?
I think we can elect four members of this for the short period of time. I think come November, we can begin to roll it into a different committee because I think having four committees with nine people is awfully difficult. But I would think that we would have a bipartisan committee of at least one or two Democrats, one or two Republicans on the committee. So it's not a vehicle to message campaigning, and it's about dispensing information. But I think it should, we need to meet to understand, to answer these questions that we've had from parents and the community.
Mr. Burke.
Well, I had a specific question, but I, I don't, personally, I wouldn't be concerned what the letter was next to anybody's name on any committee of this board. I think we're all members of the Board of Education, and that's the end of the, that inquiry. But I'd like to know, since it would actually be our work, what, I mean, what specifically would this committee be doing? I mean, I think that we have an hour and a half of public comment because we have an extraordinary situation, which in the last six years hasn't occurred. And I think once we're past this, we'll be unlikely to occur on a consistent basis. So what would the committee do? We have an extensive PTO system that's communicating with us all the time. We have these public meetings where we're doing everything so transparently. What would this board be doing as a committee that the district doesn't do itself? It maintains websites, it's talking to parents all the time. So I just want to understand what the charge of the committee would be. Again, I think the charge would be similar to Ridgefield's, to dispense information in a way that the community can understand and interpret easily and gather feedback from said community to enhance communication. I think we have been reliant too much on our administration, which is over, I don't want to say overwhelmed, but they're overworked for sure at this point. And we're reliant too much on them to dispense the information. It probably should be coming from the Board of Education. And I think we need to take some ownership of that to dispense some information to the community. And I think it would lighten the load of our administration for that, as well as the part that, you know, I think we, for me, honestly, we've had difficulty with our communication from the superintendent to us as well, that I think the communication committee could work on that. And I don't have all the answers. I'm proposing, I think the committee should try to work on their charge as well of what they think it could do.
Mrs. Stein.
I guess, I'm sort of where Mr. Burke is. I feel like it's somewhat redundant. You have, every school has a wire, they have reps to the board that report out. We have CDSP, who does represent parent voice and back and forth from us to parents. We have Dr. Adley's Friday update. I'm just not sure what this committee's going to report out on. And if it's just, you know, I think a big problem we have is we do communicate. And I think, look, we can do a better job, but I also think our community doesn't always read everything we put out. You know, our FAQs for the reopening, and we saw that there was some confusion there. I think it's a two-way street, and I fear that putting another committee together is going to add more work that's sort of redundant in our district. And I don't really see the need for it right now, to be honest.
Mrs. Ritchie, then I saw Mrs. McCammon, then Mr. Stein.
Well, I, you know, this has been my mantra the past couple of months, communication and improving it, and I'm all for making it better. But I would love to hear from Dr. Adley. Have you ever, did Gramby ever have a communication committee? If it did, did it work, was it good? Is this something that you would think would benefit your work and the administration's work?
So Gramby for, in name, if you could look up the bylaws in the name, that's the Policy and Communications Committee. So it did, I will say it didn't really take a particularly active role in the communications arena. That being said, communications can always be better, and organizationally, from individuals to the organization in general, to the board as well. It is in our goal, and it is in our, it's going to be, well, it's in the draft goals also strategically. So if there's ways strategically to tackle that, I certainly, I certainly would entertain if there's a way to strategically tackle it. It just, as long as it's very clearly defined of expanding and improving. If it's macro managing stuff, that's a different, that's a different discussion.
I guess, do we need a committee to do that? Or is that, I guess that's my bigger question, Dennis. Do we need another subcommittee to do that specifically?
We can do everything by the board. I mean, we don't need a finance committee, we don't need a policy committee. All that can be done by the board for the same reason you can do communication. But we failed, we failed for years doing this.
Well, I think policy and finance serve a different purpose.
I'm going to pause on saying that the board, that there's a failure of the board. I still don't think we have a working idea of what you'd like yet. But I also want to give Mrs. McCammon a turn and then Mr. Steeney a turn. So, Mrs. McCammon.
So I think that at this particular moment in time, we have an opportunity to give a subcommittee a home for the media strategy and outreach goal. I think, and it's at this time when communication is particularly complex, and we are looking at different ways that we want to communicate. I think it's a good time to have a subset of the board working on it. I think that we could take a look if we decide that ultimately it's redundant and it isn't good for the long term, then that's fine. But I think it's a good point in time to test out a home for that kind of work. They've come up with a communication plan and a strategy. I think there could be a check for community culture for Dr. Adley as needed. And certainly, they could reinforce our board commitment to family engagement, you know, through an actual, a planned entity. So I see this as being, at the very start, a way to get that work going, to give it a home within our board. And then, you know, we can evaluate from there.
Mr. Steeney.
Yeah, I mean, you know, CSP was mentioned. They also asked for more communication from the district and the board most recently. I know we're in a crisis, but it's a great opportunity to seize a moment and implement, you know, another tool, a working group. I propose the process be, you know, you assign a few people to explore the formation of a committee, and they kind of propose what the charge of the committee would be, and the board would approve or deny whether or not that committee should exist or it should be part of policy. But I think it's a great idea, especially this crisis doesn't seem like it's going away. And we can figure out better ways to message to set expectations amongst our parents. So I fully support the proposal, at least to explore, you know, a committee.
So it sounds like a motion. I mean, are we formulating a motion here? I mean, it sounds like.
Why don't we let everyone speak, and then if there's a motion?
I didn't, I didn't make a motion, to be clear.
Thanks. Just following up on Katie's point, we do have a lot of communication coming out as a parent. I know personally as a parent, I can't keep up with all of it. I'd like to go through this exercise, maybe to see if there's some streamlining or see if we can put some information together. To Dr. Adley's point, that maybe there's a communication name only. Maybe we just, you know, to Mr. Steeney's point, put them two together. Maybe we just go through this exercise, see what's out there, see if we can identify a problem, get our hands around it. And maybe this committee's gone in six months. Maybe this is, you know, not a long-lived committee, or maybe it's part of policy and still doesn't last for very long. But I think this is an inflection point where we should really take the opportunity, put the time in, based on the feedback we've had, and really do a little bit of looker and ask ourselves if we're doing the best job communicating out to the public that we could.
Mr. Burke.
Well, and obviously, we currently have a policy committee. I'm hearing two different things. If there's a, several members who want to convene a working group to create a more detailed proposal of a committee and what it would do, what its charge would be, what its goals and objectives would be, that's different than just, you know, 11:40 at night saying, oh, we think there's a communication problem. Let's make a communication committee. I mean, I don't think that's efficient or an idea that would lead to success. But I think to Denny's point, that, you know, if that, there could be a working group and a process and then a very, you know, formal proposal, I mean, that would be a different thing to try and support. I just know for me personally, as stated right now, I wouldn't be in favor of creating such a committee. But I'd be very interested to see a working group that actually comes together and creates a specific proposal as to what the committee would do.
So, I agree. Okay, I'm going to, I'm going to say this.
I agree with that.
Okay, I think that this idea of exploring what a committee look like is a far stronger idea. Mostly because some of what I'm hearing is what this committee couldn't do is not district management of communication. We would have to be very clear what is board communication, what is administrative communication. There is a difference between the BOE and the district. There's a difference between the administration, the district, and the BOE. When you use those terms, they mean things. And I think we have to be very clear on what this is doing. I think we'd have to be very clear on how the committee could work, considering it speaks with one voice. The chairperson is the spokesperson, so is the committee working after a board meeting, charged to go look at an issue, is the committee coming forward? I think it's probably much wiser, should this be in interest of the board, to convene a working group. Certainly, I don't think board chairs are concerned of whether they put Dems or R's on. I've created committees for three years. I've actually put interest on it and then tried to match skills and talents to things. So I don't really think that's a con. really think that's a concern. Any special committees created, the board chair would appoint the committee members. A working group is something different and we can look at that. So I far would support more the idea that Mr. Seeny brought up than Mr. Burke. And then I heard some other members support. If the board would like to kind of engage a little bit of exploring on this and come back with a real proposal of what goals we think we're meeting, I think that's a, a better idea than creating a committee tonight when we're not sure what it's doing. That's my position. I don't know if there's a motion of someone, this is not on for possible action. I don't, did you, did he put it on? Did you say possible action? Sorry, I could say, okay. So if you'd like to call a vote on it, or, or, that's fine. I, I do like the idea if there's a secondary motion on an exploratory committee, I think that's probably a better way to go. Or a working group to explore what this committee would do.
Mr. Maroni, would you like to amend your original motion?
He didn't make a motion. It's just-
Well, I thought there was-
No, it's just on as a possible action item. So a motion would need to be formulated.
So would someone like to make a motion?
Sure, I'll make it. To convene a working group to study the necessity and function of a Communication Subcommittee of the Board.
Is there a second?
Sorry.
Is there a second? I'm looking at Mr. Maroni. He doesn't want to second it. Mind me.
He thirded it.
All, all in favor. And that is unanimous. So I will figure out how to convene this working committee and have, give Mr. Maroni a call and get back to you all on this. Okay, we will move on to action items. So, as I mentioned at the top of the meeting, we had a particularly unusual request. It's been a long time. I checked back as far as records and we have not had the public ask for an agenda item. However, Mr. Greg Grambling sent this in with a letter of, I believe, 175 parents. And so I thought that there was some value at that point for the board to be aware of the request, the public to be aware of the request in terms of communication responsiveness, like we just discussed. It was a very direct motion. It came in prior to our Thursday meeting. After our Thursday meeting, which we discussed voting, what that was, what that wasn't, some policy issues. I reached back out, Dr. Adley expressed his concerns with something like this and what it meant for the school district's integrity. I reached back out to Mr. Grambling and said, do you and the undersigned 175 parents still want this agenda item on the board, on the agenda? He said yes, he did without changes. So, what we have as an action item here per public request is a discussion and possible action on requiring the school administration to return to a full in-person five days a week as soon as possible, but not later than September 29th, 2020, and to require that any change to that plan of education require approval of the Board of Education.
I'm sorry, are you making that motion?
No, I'm not making the motion. It is up for discussion first.
And I apologize. Could you read it again?
Sure.
It's on the agenda, right? Is it, are you reading the agenda?
Yeah, it's exactly on the agenda. Discussion and possible action requiring the school administration to return to full in-person five-day-a-week as soon as possible, but not later than September 29th, and to require that any change to that plan of education require approval from the Board of Education. Now, let me be clear in how this works.
Thank you.
The board does not have to discuss this. This was the request as written by the public. Should the board choose to discuss it, that's fine. But should the board decide this matter is closed, it can move on. If the board would like to open up this matter, it is as written requested.
Sorry, Deb, I can't hear.
Technically, we should move the motion.
So technically, someone should move and second the motion and then discussion would ensue from there and then-
Well, first, the board has to decide who wants to take this matter up. Oh, so what Deb is saying from Robert's Rule is that the motion needs to move. If someone moves a motion, if we second it, we can open it up. If nobody seconds it, we move on. I will move it as board chair. Is there a second? Mr. Seeny's seconds. Is there any conversation on this? Mrs. Stein.
I, personally, I feel like last Thursday, we hashed this out pretty in-depth. And I think, at least me personally, I feel like I was very clear in my point of view on it. And I don't feel the need to discuss it further.
Mr. Maroni.
I personally do not like the words require in that, in this motion. I would tend to use a word that I support my superintendent's decision in reopening the schools on October, on September 29th, rather than I require a vote to do so.
I don't know if we can change it. It's as written. I've checked twice that this is how they've written and this is how-
We can amend it though, can't we?
It's not our motion. It's not our motion. You can make a separate motion, but that's not on the agenda. This is their motion.
So we can't amend a, a, a motion?
I don't-
That we made. We made it. You made it and I seconded it.
No, to discuss it.
No, we moved. I moved it because it's from, you seconded it, but it is as written. I don't know that we have the authority to amend it.
I mean, I, I don't know Robert's Rules well enough to know if someone can make another motion. But this is the motion that has been proposed.
This is the motion that's been proposed.
I don't know if another motion can be made. But I will just, since I have the microphone, I'm gonna say I'm against this particular motion. I don't like the wording. I think it has, it's in contrast to statutory authority given to the superintendent. And basically, I support Dr. Adley. I support his plan. And let's all hope that September 29th, we're all back in-person learning.
Mr. Burke.
I'm impressed with their advocacy. And I understand their point, but as a practical matter and how we function as a board, I think it would be in opposite to our charge to pass such a motion. It's, and I would be voting against it on that basis. And I agree with Ms. Ritchie's comments and hopes.
Any other thoughts? Mrs. McCammon?
If we're able to amend it, I think we could amend it to something workable. You know, again, back to Dennis's point of supporting the school administration's plan. But I don't think that we, any change of that plan is, is difficult to interpret. So for example, I think we would agree to the structure of the plan, which includes the metrics by which you would make school opening and closing decisions. But certainly in voting tonight, we would not be, I think it would be important that we weren't involved in those. So if we could change the wording, I'm fine with it. But as written, I think it's a bit confusing. So.
My, my question on this is, given that it's per the public's request and it's their motion we asked us to consider, if we were to amend it, we are no longer in considering their request. So I find it overly prescriptive. We all know that, how I feel, particularly on, on this issue. I think I've been clear. In addition, I find this overly prescriptive. If we had a power outage at one of the schools and we couldn't open them on the 29th, then quite frankly, we couldn't open it. And to get back together, to vote, to unvote, it's, it's thorny. I also think that, that this is not, I don't need to rehash Thursday. You know where I all stand on Thursday and that position has not changed. Any other comments on this? Okay, with that, oh, Mr. Brown?
Sorry. Just looking at this, you know, communications-wise, I actually appreciate the efforts that were gone through to collate a list of different parents and submit it in one forum. I think that is very respectful to the board's time and the, all of us here. So I really appreciate that time and effort spent coming up with this proposal. I actually believe this does show support to Dr. Adley and the plan that he has in place for the 29th, as written. And I also think it's important, communication-wise, to our parents, that we let them know that this is the full intent of the board and, in support of the administration to start school in full next week. And so I would vote in favor.
Okay, so.
Yeah, I, I still want to call a point of order on not being able to amend the motion. It's 11:50 at night. So I'm also respectful of the board's time. But the board made the motion. You as chair, I seconded it with the anticipation that we could amend it.
Well, I, well, one, I didn't know your anticipation was to amend it. But my, my, my question of this, and maybe, maybe this is just an answer that we don't have, that has to be tabled. If this was the motion per public request, should we take up a different motion? We've then moved off of their motion. And then we've actually created another agenda item.
But then we're taking up for ourselves the issue of do we vote in this scenario?
Yeah.
And that's a separate issue. And if you want to add, you want to do that, we can vote on this and then you can make another motion.
We can amend the agenda and add another-
No, we don't have to amend the agenda.
But you can still do that. You can do that. But I think we need, as I said last Thursday, at some point, we have to put this to bed because the superintendent has to, and we as a board have to understand in what circumstances-
That's my understanding. I, if, if Robert's Rules can prove me wrong, I'm just trying to be respectful of. I asked twice, is this the motion they wanted? So I think if we were to amend it, we're changing their request. It's on and actually I'm at their request. So I'm trying to be respectful of, of their motion. I actually agree with you, Mr. Brown. I think the way, while I haven't always agreed with some of the messaging, the actual delivery of this was very respectful. So I am trying to be respectful of that. I think that if we were to change this motion, we are adding an agenda item.
We, we, again, it was put on as an agenda item. We just made the motion. They didn't make the motion. It wasn't put on as a motion.
It was put on per the public's request.
The motion itself is an agenda item. It's not to discuss-
I'm sorry, I can't hear you both speak. I want-
The motion was the actual requested agenda item. You all have that emailed. They requested this specific motion.
It does look like that.
But the agenda item is not a discussion and possible action. It's this particular item. I, so I guess we're, and I, I don't have Robert's Rules in front of me, but this is the item on the agenda. I guess we could, someone can move to-
Someone can move to amend the agenda.
-amend the agenda and add another action item. But this is the item here. And if you want to add something else, I guess you can make a motion to do that.
I move to amend the agenda.
Second.
Okay, all in favor of amending the, wait, you have to tell us what you want to amend the agenda to. Okay.
I want to amend the agenda to possible action on supporting the administrative decision to return to full in-person five days a week on September 29th, 2020. And the plan.
Leave it there.
Period. Supporting, supporting the administration's decision. Help us out. Keep going.
To return to full in-person five days a week on September 29th, 2020.
Jill, as we're technically a half day on Friday, so I don't know. Different, on your motion.
I think technically, even if it's a half day, it's considered a day.
Okay, so we now have a motion to amend the agenda. So we need a two-thirds vote to amend the agenda.
I'm sorry, that was McCammon moving it. I'm going to second it.
Yep. Okay, a vote to amend the agenda?
One for the commission.
Yep.
Have we just voted in this suggestion for the simple process this time?
Nope, you can, you can make a motion to amend the suggestion, agenda item of Mrs. McCammon. Yes. What would you like? What's the motion, Mr. Brown?
Add another sentence. If she had a consent for 29th, just any change be made with, in consultation with the Board of Education.
Okay, is there a second for that motion? So that motion fails.
So the amendment fails.
The amendment fails. So we are now back to a vote on Mrs. McCammon's vote.
I think it's a point of order. We have a vote for the actual, a vote for the motion on the board.
Right.
No, no, no. There may, I know, but she's made the amendment. So now I have to take up that vote. Then I have to go back to the other one after the agenda is amended. So is, we are voting, do we, is, there's a two-thirds vote to, needed to amend the agenda to possible action, supporting the administration decision to return full five days a week in person September 29th. I need a two-thirds vote. All in favor. One, two, three, four. Brown is in favor. McCammon is in favor. Seeny's in favor. Maroni's in favor. That motion does not carry. Now we go back to the item we are at, which I believe is the per public request item.
So now we have a point of order.
So now you have a what?
A point of order about whether or not we can amend or not.
Yes. I don't believe we can. I'm happy if someone wants to research it or table this item to the next meeting, although you realize-
It's after the fact.
Okay, that's what I'm saying. So if you would like to research it now, that's fine.
The technicality is it's, the, we are taking the motion as proposed by the public. So this is the motion the public wanted. So I don't-
Again, if you can cite anything in here that talks about a public motion, I'm just going by regular motion rules.
You can make another motion and you just did. So I, and it's-
Yeah, you can make a motion to it. You could, we just made a motion to change, to amend and it failed.
If we don't- amend the agenda.
Yeah.
Not amend the motion.
So we didn't approve the amendment. We added a motion.
Yeah.
I'd like to amend the motion.
You'd like to amend the public's emotion, motion?
Our motion. Our chair made it. I second it.
What would you like to amend it to?
I'm going to amend the motion.
Basically, what exactly Jill said. I second.
Okay, so, we don't know if we can, but Mr. Maroni seconded it. Okay, all in favor. Any discussion on that?
Yeah, so what, don't we have to make a decision on this?
No, because John has now, is making a motion to amend it. Mr. Maroni believes we can do that. So he seconded it. So now there's any discussion on this, which would include what would you like, before you, you seconded it, he hasn't actually amended it yet. So what would you like the amendment to base?
Again, Jill stated basically that the Daring Board of Education fully endorses the Daring Public Schools Administration current plan to return to in-person learning September 29th, 2020.
The public's motion?
Our motion.
No.
Okay. And Mr. Maroni, are you seconding that? Because you seconded something you didn't even know what he was doing.
No, he said, he said he wants to use Jill's verbiage to amend the amendment. So I'm seconding that.
So you're seconding that.
Correct.
So, all in favor. That is Maroni, Seeny, McCammon, and Brown. The motion fails. Thank you, everyone. I know that seemed, anyone who's still watching us, like a lot of mumbo jumbo, but we do try to keep to Robert's Rules, even when it's confusing. Personnel item.
Point, point of order. I still think we have the original motion on the agenda.
Oh, sorry, we have the original motion. Thank you. Okay. Can I call a vote on the original motion? My TV's going to turn off in one minute. Who's watching? Can I call a vote on the original motion? All in favor. Mr. Brown is in favor. All opposed. That is Seeny, Stott, McCammon, Burke, Ritchie, Hoffman, Denise, and Maroni. Thank you, everyone. Mrs. Siam, the PAR, which I think speaks for itself this time. Yeah. Can I have a motion to approve the PAR dated? What's the date of this point? I think we could just get it on the wire. September 20th, Tuesday, September 22nd, 2020. Mr. Burke, so moves a second. Ladies and gentlemen, I need a second.
Second.
Mr. Maroni, all in favor. That is unanimous. Thank you, everybody. Is there a public comment? Again, for the public, if what you are doing is supporting a comment that was made before, you can reference that or you can reference, you agree with so-and-so's comment. We have taken copious notes.
There are several raised hands.
Okay.
Would you like me to go to the instructions again or?
No, I think we're clear on the instructions.
Dawn McIntyre, you are unmuted and recognized.
Dr. Adley, you indicated that you were relying heavily on your advisors. During today's weekly webinar, the State Department of Ed and the State Department of Health and their advisor, Dr. Liu from Yale, commented about three feet versus six feet distancing. The state reiterated that they're recommending the CDC's six-feet social distancing model. Dr. Adley, are you and the Board of Ed agreeable to bringing in an outside infectious disease expert to confer on the district's reopening plan in the face of this global pandemic? It is the responsibility of our community leaders, which means all of you, and I beg of you, to present a model for our schools and our community that achieves this six-feet social distancing. At the very least, of course, we can find a way to get K-2- social distancing. At the very least, of course, we can find a way to get K-25 kids into school every day while keeping our MMS and DHS kids safe in an excellent hybrid model. The good news is that there is absolutely no race to open on 9/29. We need to get through flu season. We need to gain a clearer understanding of COVID-19 and treatment, and this will come with every day as each day passes. Please work even harder, and you are working hard, all of you. I appreciate this. I don't know how you do it. Please work even harder to accomplish the six-feet social distancing for our schools. We can't accomplish prevention for our community. We cannot control COVID-19. We can combat COVID-19, and we can do so if we follow the CDC guidelines. I beg of you, go slow.
Thank you, Mrs. McIntyre. Is there any other public comment?
Louise Waylett, you are unmuted and recognized.
Like, can you... Says unable to start video. Hang on a second. Start my video. Okay, well, okay, thanks. You can see me now. So I have two quick questions, actually. I would be interested in a communications committee if it meant, as a constituent, that is, I know I'm not Board of Ed member, if it meant that all minutes from all meetings, including closed caucus meetings, if all minutes were shared with all of us constituents. I think if you decide to have a communications committee, you don't get to pick and choose which minutes or which meetings you share. My second question relates to the motion that a few of the Board of Ed members were speaking about. I think it's to do with Mr. Grambling's motion. And I have a question about, it's a policy question, and I have a question about what is the policy on Board of Ed members posting on Facebook, parent Facebook group pages, which to my mind actually could also be lobbyist pages. So I'd like to know what the board's policy is on Board of Ed members posting on those public Facebook pages.
Thank you, Mrs. Brown. The board does not respond to public comment. We do receive it. And so do, so would you like me to put these questions in lighting? So we'd like to... The board cannot respond to public comment at this point, but we will thank you for your comments, and someone will follow up with you. Thank you. Any other speakers this evening?
Bruce Mitchell, you are unmuted and recognized.
Hi. I know that it's very late this evening. I'm an educator at Darian High School. I'm a resident of New Canaan. I have four young children in the public school system, whom I had to take out of private school due to hybrid learning and the significant costs associated with that. I've been teaching for 21-plus years as an educator, not including my time teaching adults and adolescents. English is a foreign language. I've been a parent for 12 years. And I just wanted to tell you how incredibly difficult it is to do this hybrid plan. I've seen my children really suffer through it. It's not good for them after several months of remote learning, a summer where everything was canceled. I really, my heart goes out to every single parent who spoke this evening. As a parent, I really do empathize with every single one of them. It's incredibly difficult. I've seen the negative effects on my children, on my family. It has affected us financially, logistically, very, very significantly. And this is just not sustainable in the long term. You know, my personal frustration with the New Canaan public school system has been that we did not have a single case for a month. We were in hybrid learning, even though the metrics suggested full in-person learning that did not take place. You know, it was very upsetting. You know, it was extreme strain on my family financially and logistically to go to work every day when my children were home and only going to school maybe one and a half days per week. It's not sustainable in the long term. If it's absolutely necessary due to caseload, I can certainly understand, and I would support it for the safety of all concerned. However, if there are fewer than 10 cases over a seven-day period, I see absolutely no reason to be in a hybrid mode. None. You know, I feel that we are a central infrastructure. I'm a central worker. Children need to learn. People need to go to work. I need to go to work. My children need to be educated. Everyone in the community needs to go to work, and their children need to go to school. And if we can do that, it absolutely has to happen. And I'm just saying, as a parent and as an educator, I don't speak for my union. I do not speak for my colleagues. I'm speaking as an individual, just as a parent and as a teacher.
Thank you, Mr. Mitchell.
Taylor Carter, you are unmuted and recognized.
Thank you. This is Taylor Carter. I live at 385 Middle 6th Road. I am the creator of the Teach Our Kids Facebook page, and also the creator of the graphic distributed today depicting our K through 5 students' daily schedule. I take issue with the allegation that the graphic is not representative of what our elementary children experience every day when they are at home. Across my three elementary students, and after speaking with many other parents, it has proven to be 100% accurate across grade level and school that our children are receiving zero live instruction two days a week. The third remote day, Friday, is only different in that the children receive 15 minutes of live instruction versus zero minutes of live instruction. If any elementary students in the district are receiving something different, I would love to know. That graphic is accurate. Morning meeting is a social event. Office hours is a 30-minute window for students and/or parents to wait in line and quickly ask the teacher questions if they're having trouble. And the optional closing circle cannot possibly count as teaching. I am hopeful that the phasing in we heard about tonight will begin to correct these deficiencies, but am highly concerned that Darian middle school and high school students are actively receiving learning this year while our elementary students are not. For those children who cannot be in the building right now, and for everyone's sake, should we be returned home, fixing remote learning is non-negotiable. As an aside, I want to state that my goal in creating the Teach Our Kids Facebook page and raising the profile of this issue was to ensure that my children and all our children receive an adequate education. It was not to attack teachers or the administration. The effort has simply been made to highlight an acute problem that desperately needs fixing. And finally, for any of you who have not witnessed a day in the life of a remote K through 5 student and still question my concerns or the concerns of the hundreds of parents who have spoken at these meetings, written to you, and have been in contact with me through the site, please consider sitting down with one of them to witness it firsthand before dismissing it as false. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker?
Laura Pesky Gray, you are unmuted and recognized.
All I want to say is, when the remote learning model was brought up in terms of communication, I think many parents who are concerned about the safety of our children in the full-time, fullback next week, they needed the information about the Phase 2, Phase 3, Phase 4, which is actually brand-new to me. But I made it very clear that I was planning on doing the remote model if we went fullback. So my teacher personally took the time and reached out and asked me if, what my plans were. And he was basically explaining to my children in the classroom today what that was going to look like. I didn't, it was really important for many parents to understand that now, or two weeks ago, or three weeks ago, in an effort to really be able to plan for their family and plan for the school on what, you know, I'm thrilled to see more live learning being done. I don't think that that was clear to anyone unless you were on the call tonight. So thank you. And I know that that's going to be rolled out Thursday, but it would have been better to roll it out sooner so people were more aware. And to really, truly understand that there's a lot of work going on behind the scenes, yet parents are not aware of it. Thank you so much for all your hard work.
Thank you. Mrs. Pesky Gray, are there any other comments this evening?
Carolyn H., you are unmuted and recognized.
Hi, everybody. So as the presumed case at Tokenique, I feel an obligation to speak. I know it's late, but I thought it was important. I'm the SaaS facilitator at Tokenique, and I believe that Darian Public Schools handled my presumed case and situation as best as it could, with the mercy of my honesty and willingness to be vigilant. My details in current quarantine is not the reason I'm speaking. I'm speaking to ask for help, help for understanding from all members of the community to handle each case with the attention it needs, because everyone is someone's mom, daughter, friend, sister, brother, et cetera. As somewhat of a guinea pig in this process, I believe it was handled proactively, but it did rely on my opus and honest communication between the district and myself. I'm grateful for the expertise and support Alicia Kosuchi provided. She conveyed genuine concern for my health over the weekend, as every few hours changed trajectory during all hours of the night. Not every presumed case could be handled the same. I don't, I don't work directly with students, and therefore, my contact list was not too long for most of the people listening right now. However, under doctor's orders, I am supposed to stay quarantined until late next week. I am a parent who has to quarantine not only myself, but my family and my own children from school. I also tested negative prior to school opening on September 1st. I chose to be open and honest with my current condition with this school, but it is a fearful experience, and I wouldn't want any teacher to be, I wouldn't want any teacher to not be able to seek medical attention due to the fear of a community upheaval. So please help me let teachers work without the fear of being ridiculed during this unprecedented time we're in. Each case will need privacy and proper attention. We are learning to fly the plane as we build it. Parents are teachers, and teachers are parents. Let us all teach our children compassion and tolerance. If it wasn't for the compassion of family, friends, and coworkers this weekend, my kids would have seen a sad, sad, sad world. Thank you to all those who showed up.
Thank you, Mrs. Hody. We wish you a speedy recovery. Are there any other speakers this evening?
No more raised hands at this time.
Thank you very much. With that, may I entertain a motion to adjourn Mr. Sini to handle the first, Mr. Burke, all in favor. And that is unanimous. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.